Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
People think that a locally owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303 or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638 or meganet.net.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. It is our November 18th, 2019 Board of Selectmen meeting. Mr. Patterson.
Oh, yes, I'd like to take the opportunity to recognize Wee Blow Sten from PAC 41 that's in attendance tonight. I've just been working with them on teaching some civics about our town government and how it fits into the state government and the national government. They were a great group of guys to work with, and they're going to honor us by leading us in the pledge of the flag today. So I'll ask you guys to stand up, and if you don't mind, your designated leader can cue us all in.
Myself is.
Scout Saloo.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us and stay as long or as little as you choose.
I think they're ready to go.
Yes, I'm sure. We are insulted. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Hi. One wants to stay.
And if anyone else wants to.
Yeah. Any of you got, you guys have to stay, though. All right, under recognition tonight, we wanted to just let folks know that Ray Jack, who has worked for the Town of Falmouth for 25 years.
Over 25 years, yes.
Over 25 years, has decided that it is time to retire. He has seen us through some really big projects, and I know, you know, he had some plans to probably retire a bit sooner and has stuck it out so that he has seen us through two of our last major, the waste, the water treatment facility and the sewer-ing project, not to mention so many others that he has been a steward of and has really lent his expertise and his level of commitment for so long. I don't know, Mr. Suso, if you wanted to add anything to that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Only that it's with a note of sadness that I acknowledge having received the retirement notice from Ray. I had recognized that, given his many years of service, that he and his wife could choose that milestone at any time. It's certainly well-earned, and Ray has had a long and distinguished career in multiple jurisdictions, and Falmouth has just been the most recent recipient, as Megan noted, for 25, over 25 years. Ray is highly recognized and distinguished in his field of public works, and as has been noted, he's really overseen a number of extraordinary projects on behalf of the town, not the least of which was the multi-award-winning water treatment facility where the town has gotten enormous recognition and deservedly so. And some other projects are underway, as noted, so we acknowledge and thank Ray. It's been my pleasure as Town Manager to work with him and to support him in the many initiatives in public works. I also would be remiss if I didn't note that the Public Works Department in Falmouth is different from other public works departments essentially in the Cape and in much of the Commonwealth because we're what's called a full-service community. We have in-house water, wastewater, and all of the normal public works functions. The highway portion is the portion that every community generally has, but the, not the water and the wastewater, and the incredible challenges and diversity that goes with that. So Ray brings hands-on experience with him prior to my arrival in all of those areas, and his influence and his experience will certainly be missed, and we wish him, he and his wife and his family, the best of all things in retirement.
If I could add just briefly to that, particularly those last two projects, both came in under budget and under, or not under time, but in time. It was truly remarkable, and as the year that I taught chemistry, the amount of knowledge he has, I was able to bring my class up to the water treatment plant, and here, just the astounding amount of knowledge that Ray has on these, thrilled to share with youngsters, with the rest of us, is just truly impressive and people will be missed.
One other thing, I mean, I've managed some pretty large, complicated projects in the Defense Department, and the knowledge, not only technically of what it is, but also of knowing what's likely to go wrong is so important, and be out in front of it so that you can actually curb the effects of those things. I think that's really the key to making sure that these very complicated projects with all these people, all these subcontractors involved, somehow or other get orchestrated in a way that they come together, and as Doug has just pointed out, if in budget and on time. To me, I really do take my hat off to Ray for Ray being able to stay on top of these really complicated projects and bring them in, you know, for us, really, in the best possible outcomes.
Well, I think we're going to really miss him on the coastal resiliency part of it because his ability to interact with state agencies is pretty exceptional, and his knowledge of the coastal resiliency needs and the roles that he's been playing, interacting with other towns and other agencies, it's going to be hard to replace on that.
Some committees, we can appoint him to soon.
Yeah, exactly. After civilian life, we can scoop him up for some committee, so.
On that, though, I will say he's been a really good mentor to so many people in the various departments, so I think that some of that great knowledge has certainly rubbed off, and we do have really great people that'll be, you know, kind of pick up the mantle in many respects, although certainly unique, and he gives quite a presentation. I mean, he's come and given us.
Our many movies that we have.
Exactly, our many movies.
And people don't realize that Ray's actually been teaching night classes at Bridgewater State University, so he is a mentor in many ways. Not only here within our own town staff, but also for others who are coming through our educational institutions.
And obviously, we'll have more about sort of what the process will be going forward in terms of, you know, filling that position and looking for the right candidate, the right person to step into those shoes, and we'll talk about that process once we get to it. And certainly, Ray's been generous enough to agree to help with some of that transition so that we are able to, as smoothly as possible, move into that next, that next phase. So we wish him well, and we'll have further information about that.
Congratulations.
Any announcements? No? Okay. Public comment. For anyone here who wants to make a comment, the time limit is two minutes, and please come up, introduce yourself. And it looks like the people who want to make public comment know the rules, so I won't repeat them, but Mr. Fineran.
And now for the reality. Mr. Jack was in the position, or our DPW Director was in the position, worked himself into the position, was either retire or get fired.
I'm going to stop.
Just two weeks ago.
Mark?
Just two weeks ago.
Just a minute, I'm going to.
I'm not breaking any of the rules.
I'm going to stop you. We're not going to talk about someone's, we don't personally make attacks.
I'll stop personal. It's about the town.
Okay, if it's about the town in general.
Yeah, it is. Two weeks ago, was brought forward, the asbestos issue, which had been ongoing for 25 years or longer. Then last Thursday, there was an arbitration hearing, and as it turns out, the person who's been running our water plant was unqualified. His documentation was falsified. During the hearing, the person that should have got the job, and this person who actually had the job, were asked questions by the lawyer from the union. The guy running the job got about 20% of the questions right in many of the situations, and the person who should have got the job got 100% right in most of the situations. Neither the Director or the Water Superintendent even knew what an OSHA 40 was. Even I know what an OSHA 40 is. 25% of our fire hydrants do not work.
Madam Chair, this sounds like a personal attack to me on two of our employees.
Well, I can say what you want. It's what I said, and it's reality, and it happened at the hearing.
Was he at the hearing?
25% of our fire hydrants don't work because they have not been maintained properly.
If you're talking about fire hydrants.
I am talking about fire hydrants. I'm talking about water. I'm talking about the whole thing.
But we're not going to talk about individuals, Mark. So if you're going to.
At the last, the last hearing, we were told that we had all the safety equipment necessary that we should have had decades ago. The reality was, that stuff, a lot of that stuff was only just delivered this past Thursday. You said there's some great sadness, I can tell you, to the man in the DPW. There was no sadness whatsoever.
More personal attacks, Madam Chair.
It's time to move forward in an intelligent manner.
I would ask Police Chief, Don, if he might have Mr. Fineran leave the podium, please.
Your two minutes are up.
Because you wasted it all.
Inappropriate.
We didn't waste it all. You know what the rules are.
It's the reality, and you know it.
Okay, thank you. Do we have? Yep.
Leonard Johnson, Precinct 5, North Falmouth. I'd like to make some positive comments. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for their presentations and the clarification of several issues at town meeting. I have felt in the past sometimes that the board had not, not this board, but previous boards, had not exerted sufficient leadership, and that was clearly not the case this time, and I'd like to thank you for that, and advocating and clarifying was very nicely done. Secondly, I'd like to comment about the annual report. Diane Davidson has done another wonderful job with this. Getting all these people to put all this stuff together must be a humongous task, and she does it gracefully, and if people want to know what's really going on in town, and sometimes people comment to me, "I don't know what's going on in town," well, get a copy of the annual report because it's all in there. She's done a great job. And for several years now, the salary information has also been included. I used to tilt at windmills to try to get that in 10 years ago, but now it's there all the time, and in the interest of transparency, I think that's a real plus. Finally, I know you're going to have a presentation by the Woods Hole Group on sea level change here before you, before long. I'd like to suggest that there probably is not enough room for the people here in this room who ought to be hearing that. We are criticized sometimes because we don't plan ahead well. Come to those sessions because they're the most important thing facing this town in the future, and I can tell you, I was blown away by that presentation. And it's, it's not happy music, but we need to hear it and we need to be aware of it. So I would hope that you would have another public session that you urge, again, I know you can't demand, but urge town meeting members to go to it because it's really important, and give them plenty of notice. Last time, we didn't have much notice, but I went to that presentation, and it was really a significant event. Thank you very much.
Okay, under summary of actions. Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, sir, come on up. I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Smoot, Precinct 3, Woodland Road. Had the pleasure of attending town meeting a couple of nights last week, and was very entertained by the discussion about the need for parking, primarily just asking permission to negotiate. So with that topic in mind, I looked up the Falmouth Traffic Advisory Minutes from October, and in there I found that it was, a motion was put forward by the Traffic Advisory Committee and the Town Manager to put no parking signs in front of St. Barnabas. Now, I found it unusual that we're looking for parking spaces downtown and yet want to put up no parking signs in that area. As a suggestion, I know it's a very beautiful stone wall that's there, that sidewalk could probably never be built nowadays with ADA requirements. I would suggest maybe that sidewalk be taken down to street level. All that nice stonework moved across the sidewalk to the side of St. Barnabas, making a very beautiful retaining wall, and possibly picking up six, seven, or eight additional parking spaces, just like there is on the other side of the green in front of the bank. Just by two cents. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Just a reminder, we're not allowed to comment at public comment back to you, so it's not that we're ignoring people. We're just, okay. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, all right. Under summary of actions, we have approve application to amend underground storage license for a change of ownership name to AC Massachusetts LLC located at 33 Technology Park Drive, Falmouth. Let's see if this is the. Is the applicant present? You want to come, come on up, sir? I just see this, yeah. There's not the sign. Welcome, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
My name is Adam Last, and I'm with Corporate Environmental Advisors, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
Great, and we did have a letter in our packet in advance. Does anyone on the board have any questions about what was?
Just to clarify, this is not changing any use of the property, it's just changing the name of the ownership. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That the continued, you know, continued storage of flammable and combustible materials, not additional storage.
That's correct. And one other minor clarification is the, the storage is not underground, it's above ground.
Just one question, is there any licenses or training or any kind of supervisory requirements of ownership?
With respect to ownership of the firm?
No, with respect to the storage of hazardous materials, is there anything that.
Operations.
Operational management type of license or knowledge?
Yeah, there's a, the entity is subject to rec, regulations, hazardous waste storage, handling, and disposal regulations, so the employees have a protocol that they follow with the management of the material.
Okay, so the employees are the ones that are qualified to handle that, and that'll remain the same?
Correct.
Okay.
I move approval of the, ending the application to change the ownership name.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there a, an actual document that we're supposed to sign for this? I don't see anything in our, unless it's out of order.
That's my knowledge, Madam Chair. We'll double-check.
Okay, thank you. Great, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate your information you're providing in advance. Okay, approve application for a change of manager of an all-alcohol common victor license and entertainment license for 311 Gifford Street, OPCO LLC DBA Kuna Mesut Inn located at 311 Gifford Street, Falmouth. Is applicant present? If you want to come on up, introduce yourself.
My name's John Norton.
Welcome.
Thanks, sir.
And, okay, I do have the paperwork in front of me.
Have you been the manager of an all-alcohol common victor license before?
I have not.
Can you just, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Do you live in Falmouth?
I live in East Sandwich.
But you're aware that as the manager and all-alcoholic, you are completely responsible for anything that goes on in the ceremony alcohol? And you are tip-certified?
Yes.
And as far as you know, are all your employees who serve alcohol tip-certified?
Okay. Any further questions? Do I have a motion?
I guess it's the first time we've had someone who hasn't had experience before, and so I just hope you do realize how seriously we take the responsibility we're putting on your shoulders.
I do.
To make sure that that happens.
And can you tell me, do you have experience in the restaurant industry?
26 years, yes.
Okay, so just maybe not as a, as a manager, but working in that industry. Okay, great. I think I had a motion. Do I have a second?
Move approval.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Same business is looking for an entertainment license also, but should probably be a second motion.
Let me just go through what. Yep. Sir? Yep, I think it's probably not him, right? All right, we have approve application for change of DBA of an all-alcohol common victor license from JNV Ventures.
In item two, for the Kuna Mesut, they're also looking for entertainment license.
Where do you see that?
Or is that just change of manager?
Do we have the paperwork on that?
We, we have music and dance and in holders for this gentleman, entertainment and in holders.
Yeah, that is, that does cover it.
Okay. I don't have that in this, this packet, that's why I just have, for Kuna Mesut Inn, I just have the management.
I can share my copy if you want.
Three in a row here with the.
Yep.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we have a.
If it's not in the.
It's on the agenda.
It's all just linked together.
Oh, just not in the packet.
Just not in my packet. Okay. So we have an application for an entertainment license, okay, for 311 Gifford Street, OPCO LLC DBA Kuna Mesut Inn located at 311 Gifford Street, Falmouth.
Move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
But what about the in holders license?
I don't know. Well, it's not listed here, so we'll get down to it.
That's what I'm saying.
I have it in mind.
It's not on this list.
We have it, it's just not agenda.
Oh, okay.
Approve application for change of DBA of an all-alcohol common victor license from JNV Ventures LLC DBA Stone Lovin' Pizza Co. to JNV Ventures LLC DBA Simply Divine Pizza Co. 271 Main Street, Falmouth.
Move approval.
Do we have a second? Looks like we're just catching up on the names of.
Right.
I'll second that.
Just to point out that for our differences, this is not changing personnel, just changing names.
Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Approve application for a change of officer and a change of beneficial interest of an all alcohol common victor license 99 Restaurant of Boston LLC or 99 West LLC DBA 99 Restaurant and Pub 30 Davis Straits, Falmouth.
Move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Approve application for one day all alcohol liquor license, Falmouth Theater Guild, Highfield Theater, 58 Highfield Drive, Saturday, 12:14, 2019.
In our last meeting, we announced they had one left.
I think this is it.
This is it.
Yep.
I move approval.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, okay, so they're done until 2020. Application, approve application for one day agricultural liquor license, Postal Vineyards, Mahoney's Garden Center Ladies Night Holiday Open House, 9:58 East Falmouth Highway, Thursday, 11:21, 19. This is a regular event that we've seen in the past.
I move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Approve application for one day agricultural liquor license, Cape Cod Winery, Mahoney's Garden Center Ladies Night Open House. Just on twice. 9:58 East Falmouth Highway, Thursday.
Two different vendors at the same...
Need to put back in both of them. The license that we have in front of us is not to be drunk on the premises. And I thought the whole idea of this was samples to be drunk on the premises.
Do you have any clarification about that, Mr. Sussell?
I don't. That is a...
That must be a typo.
Is the applicant present?
First, that's come to my attention.
In the past, the event has been, as Doug says, to be drunk on the premises, so maybe the approval will work, but the form of license will need to be redone.
Right, and I think on our agenda, we're still fine to approve it.
That's my point.
But just the form we have in front of us, I think is not the approval we're to sign.
Yeah, good catch.
Okay, so we will sign. I just need a mo, a motion and approval for the second one.
So move.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then we can fix the form.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and last, under summary of actions, approve request to extend seasonal all alcohol common victor license until January 2nd, 2020, Landfall Restaurant, 9 Luscombe Avenue, Woods Hole.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
I just ask one before we have the vote on that. We certainly had heard in the past concerning landfall and noise issues. I'm not sure if Chief Dunn's here and I'm not sure he's not prepared for this question necessarily. Did we have any issues this year with noise complaints for landfall?
A point of order, is this really within the scope of this item on the agenda?
I think it is just for whether or not we're going to extend it through, through...
Okay, includes entertainment, it's not just for alcoholic serving, common victor.
It is common victor, but I do believe that they have some activities at that point in time, but...
I think the entertainment, their entertainment license continues with the common victor. I don't think we've heard anything, I just wanted to get that on the record that we have it.
I don't have any answer for, for you tonight, I apologize.
But it doesn't stand out in your mind?
Doesn't stand out.
Great.
Answers that, thank you. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Under administrative orders, vote to accept donation from the 300 committee in the amount of $295,000 for the Kuna Mesut Greenway Heritage Trail Project. Welcome. I'm just taking a look, I know we have public hearings that start at 7:30. Is this a five-minute?
No, it's a 8.9 minute presentation. Do you want to wait?
We probably should wait. I don't want to stop you and have three minutes remaining, so if you would just hold. Thank you, I appreciate it. Vote to accept donation from the Falmouth Road Race Incorporated in the amount of $3,000 to the Beach Department donation account.
Move approval.
Second.
With gratitude, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. That's wonderful. Vote to approve regulatory agreement for Brick Kiln Place. Mr. Sussell or Mr. Johnson-Stomp, did you want to...
Sure, this is for the 20-unit rental apartments going up on Brick Kiln Road that the, the board acting as the Falmouth Portable Housing Fund has approved funding for and this is an agreement for the monitoring of, for compliance with the income requirements for that, for that project.
Any questions about that? I know we had...
Standard, pretty much, it's a requirement.
Got a boilerplate, yep.
It has been reviewed by council.
And who's the monitoring agent going to be? The Falmouth Housing Authority?
Correct.
Correct.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Thank you. Let's see. We have approve preservation restriction for Woods Hole Public Library, 581 Woods Hole. Town manager? Mr. Sussell, town manager?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe this is related to CPC funding for historic improvement and as per normal protocol, the preservation restrictions brought to the board for your consideration to approve.
And then Historic Commission will be holding the preservation restriction?
Um, that's correct. That's my understanding as well.
They do have a member on CPC board and I know that the consultant they have that drafts these and puts them together is a state expert and we, we retain him for his expertise and so I think this is pretty much covers the waterfront, so I would move approval.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a second? Sorry.
I'll do the second as well.
All those in favor? Aye, thank you. Something similar, approve preservation restriction for the Riverbend Silo, 682 Sandwich Road. Similar situation.
Same, I move approval and the restriction held by the Falmouth Storage and Commission.
Yes.
Yes.
Right, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. We have approve inter-municipal agreement with Town of Barnstable to continue sealer of weights and measures inspections for oil trucks only.
Madam Chair, just to clarify, in the past, for a number of municipalities, the Town of Barnstable has performed that service only for the amount of the fees charged to the beneficiary. They have come to all the municipalities and asked for a basic annual amount from each municipality to continue to provide that service and reviewing with Kevin Murphy, our town sealer, the pros and cons of that. We feel it's in the town's economic interest to continue that. The amount would be $4,500 annually for the Town of Falmouth to work for that inspection of oil trucks only.
And that's not really changed from what we've been doing.
Correct.
Yep. Any questions about, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just an additional fee though, right?
Correct, just an additional fee.
But we have to take a look at the overhead that we would incur, should we try to pick up and, and implement the equipment and facility costs that go along with it? So I think this is a reasonable...
That's exactly right, Selectman Patterson, thank you.
I move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Okay.
Close enough?
Close enough, okay. Let me just pass this over to you. Okay, so we have a 7:30 hearing. Fees. Let me just get my notice. Is that considered the notice?
Yes.
Yes, there you go. Okay. As provided under chapter 119 of the Code of Falmouth, I don't think we have to sign anything on that. A public hearing will be held in the Selectman's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall on Monday, November 18th, 2019 at 7:30 PM to establish and promulgate fees which are effective as of January 1, 2020, to be charged by town departments and agencies except as provided by Mass General Law, School Department, Planning Board, Library, Town Clerk, Town Treasurer, and Collector of Taxes. Okay, and that's the proposed list of fee changes. Mr. Johnson-Stomp, did you want to just walk people, I mean, it's a pretty straightforward. Did anyone have any questions, I guess? Let me start by there, anything that stands out?
I think our just general protocols, we read what the present fee and the proposed fee is.
Okay.
And probably don't take it, in the past, we have not taken a vote tonight, but started the hearing, continued the hearing, and then voted at our next meeting.
Okay, so I can go ahead and do that. So, under departments, we have Beach Department, motel hotel sticker, present fee is $10 a day, proposed fee is $15 a day. Under health, disposal works, construction and maintenance permits, new single-family residential construction and upgrades to septic systems, present fee 100, proposed fee 150. Replacement of individual non-leaching systems, components, septic tank, distribution box, piping. There's no fee now, proposed fee is $50. New commercial and multifamily septic systems, present fee is 150, proposed fee is to delete that. I think we're replacing it instead with the categories below. Commercial and multifamily septic systems greater than 2,000 gallons per day, there's no fee presently and the proposed fee would be 200. Less than, sorry, my math skills aren't up to par. Commercial and multifamily septic systems greater than 2,000 gallons per day, there's presently no fee and the proposed fee is $350.
The only thing that's a little misleading about the nun is that currently it's a $150 fee. It's going to go...
It's just changing the categories and, and making it a little bit clearer.
Creating two categories rather than just one.
Under food service permits, catering, currently there is no fee and the proposed fee would be $75. Mobile slash temporary food permits, mobile temporary food permit, one to four days, it's $15 a day currently, proposed fee is $25 a day. Mobile temporary food permit, five days or greater, present fee is 100, proposed fee is 125. Mobile offering prepackaged foods, frozen novelties and non-potentially hazardous foods, which are categorized non-TCS, there's presently no fee and the proposed fee would be $25. Under other permits, recreational camp permit, present fee is 50, proposed fee is 75. Swimming pools and spa permit, present fee is 50, proposed fee is 75. Motel permit, present fee is 50, proposed fee is, excuse me, present fee is 25, proposed fee is 50. Under inspectional services, extension of time for permit work to begin, present fee is 25 and the proposed recommendations to delete that. Photocopies are presently 20 cents a page and they're looking to make them 5 cents a page. Microfilm copies are a dollar page, looking to delete that. Map copies a dollar, looking to delete that. Computer printout copies are a dollar presently, looking to delete that. Certified plot plan copies a dollar, looking to delete that. After hours and weekend inspection fees are currently $150 for inspection, proposed is $225 per inspection. Plumbing fees, after hours and weekend inspection fee presently is 150 per inspection, proposed is $225 for inspection. And electrical fees, do you have a second page?
Yes, it's a...
150 going to 225 for electrical, after hours and weekends.
Thank you. Under marine and environmental services, slips and warfage, July and August maximum stay is 30 nights to June, July and August maximum stay is 30 nights. So it's adding the June to the current categories. Seasonal slips, April 15th to November 15th, Maine Marina and Davis Floating Dock Section, a resident fee $157 per foot to $161 per foot, non-resident $180 per foot to 184 per foot. Charter boat section, resident $157 per foot to 161, non-resident 180 to 184. Green pond, resident 143 to 147, non-resident 164 to 168. Power charges, seasonal slips, all areas, 30 amps to 110 volts, less than 30 feet, $100 per season, we'll be deleting, or the proposal is to delete, and 30 amp, 110 volts, $300 per season, proposed is to make it $415 per season. Tax collector demand fee is currently 5 and the proposal is to put this up to $10. And this was published in the Falmouth Enterprise on November 8th, the notice of this hearing. Okay?
And what's this last note? At the Beach Committee meeting, the Beach Committee voted to raise the cost of the hotel motel fee to $15.
So the next, the next documentation is just backing up all these lines.
Yeah, the next one is just, is just, yeah, where some of these all came from. So any discussion about this? We'll put it over to, to formally vote on it, but any, does anything jump out at anyone as an area of concern or confusion?
The only thing I was pleased to see is some of the information concerning the marine services. The comparison between what we're charging and what everybody around us is charging, I'm glad to see them going up. They still are a deal at the town services compared to the private services. And I understand why we're getting rid of the distinction between the, for the electrical services, for the boats under 30 feet and over 30 feet and just having it be one set fee, no matter how big your vote is for the use of electricity and raising it up also makes a lot of sense.
I appreciate the collector seeking out to all the other towns and, you know, getting a sense of where we're at in relation to what everyone else is doing. That's good to know.
There still will be distinction between the 30 volt, or the 30 amp and the 50 amp for the power. There is even a higher level of charge of around $800 for the 50 amp service that we're getting for the electrical service at the marinas.
I think it's also important to note that even though these fees are increasing, so have the cost of providing these services increased and I think we're probably just barely catching up at this point.
I do like getting rid of those little nuisance charges for copying pages at the building department, so thanks for that.
Probably saving us money on the building event.
Exactly, effort. And so I guess we will move to continue this matter, is that what we do? Or do we just continue it?
If there's any public comment.
Okay. Is there any public comment or input on any of these proposed fee changes?
Are we going to continue to look at the other fees or you are just take care of that portion first? I've got Health Department.
I, I think those are in, isn't that in what we got?
That's everything.
That's the backup.
That's the backup to what?
It was just a backup. Me, I missed that.
What you read, Madam Chair, was the entire package.
Was the entirety.
Okay.
Okay. Maybe note for the rest.
I move, we continue the hearing till November 25th.
Great, and we had no public comment at this, at this particular hearing, and so we'll put it on for the 25th.
Will do.
If it's not hurting on there, it probably is.
Revolve it.
Yep, do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second that.
Continue, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Okay, we have, under public hearings...
Is that a, is it a civil majority on the fee hearings?
I believe it is.
That's my knowledge, yes. Because I will not be here for next to the 25th and so just in case anyone else is not going to be here, you wouldn't have four votes for it, but...
Okay, so I think that's okay then, we'll still be in the same. Okay. All right, we have an application for transfer of an all alcohol common victor license, Moto Pizza Falmouth LLC DBA Moto Pizza 500, Walk White Highway, East Falmouth. And this is a liquor license hearing, let me just read the notice as the applicants come up. Notice is hereby given under chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended that Moto Pizza Falmouth LLC DBA Moto Pizza has applied for a transfer of ownership of an all alcohol common victor license to be exercised at 500 Walk White Highway, East Falmouth. Hearing will be held in the Selectman's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall on November 18th, 2019 at 7:30 PM on the above application and this was published in the November 8th Falmouth Enterprise. Welcome, can you introduce yourself?
Good evening, good evening man and chairwoman and select board members. My name is Albert Donapoli, I'm attorney representing moto pizza Falmouth LLC. And with me is Dante Del Grosso, he is the manager of record that we're seeking to have appointed together with the approval of the transfer of the all alcoholic license. We have supplied the information, we've gone over it with town, I hope it's sufficient, but we're here to answer any questions you might have relative to the operation and the transfer.
Right. Did anyone have any questions, we had quite a bit of information.
We had a floor plan that seemed to be adequate. And everything seems in order.
This has already been, excuse me, utilized as a restaurant for quite some time, right, so it was already set up. You've done some renovations, but it already had the, the majority of its setup was for food service, correct?
Correct.
They're doing some significant build out to modernize everything, putting up the code and everything, so I think it's gonna be an improvement on what was there.
Do you have any questions?
I'm just trying to understand exactly what the business model of this pizzeria is with the name and the logo on it.
Well, we're just, so we have a business in, in Sandwich, a small, smaller business, 600 square feet. It's, it's moto pizza, we just try to make it a little more interesting than your standard pizzeria. So we do have a, a Italian motorcycle themed scooter type theme. We do bike nights up there, we won't do them here.
It's not a delivery pizza service that's going to.
No, it is, well, it's primarily takeout in the Sandwich location, but we're hoping to have some dining guests for this one. We do deliver, but it's.
Do you deliver them on a scooter?
In cars, right?
I would love to deliver on a scooter, we're working on that.
I was wondering when I saw the picture of the scooter.
Yeah.
That service, where it was, how it was heading was it seemed like it was a scooter delivery service, but then to have all alcohol common victor didn't really go with that. So that's the reason I was just asking the question.
No.
Really, it's an, it's really the biggest part is gonna be in.
Correct.
In-house service.
Yep.
Great.
Any other questions, obviously you have experience already running your restaurant in Sandwich. Do you have an anticipated opening date?
I wish I knew that, the answer to that, but hopefully the next month or so.
I know there's not a lot you can do, but do you think you have enough parking? It seems like you've increased the seating now.
Yeah, we're looking at about 30 seats that we have now, but yeah, there's not a lot I can do, but the back parking is.
There is good parking in the back?
Yeah.
Okay.
Pretty good, I'd like more.
I don't remember last time I was there, it seems like, I only noticed those few spaces in the front, but you have more out back.
Yeah, there's a couple in the front, there's a little takeout lane, it's marked as, and, and there's, yeah, the main parking is in the back.
Okay, good.
And you'll be the manager of record?
Yes.
And you understand that you're responsible for all alcoholic, all alcoholic violations and will be coming back to you to find out why they happen if they do?
Yes. We don't expect them to happen.
No one does.
Yep. We'll sit around for the next 10 minutes. I approve of the transfer of license?
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if it is the, your pleasure and the pleasure of the board, I think you could take up the last administrative order before the next two hearings, which may take some time, just, just a thought, you're not bound to, you can't start the hearings before the allotted time, but, but you don't have, have to take them right away at 7:30.
Well, could you, it actually would be nice to take it out of order because could you try and see if there is a notice for number three, an actual public hearing notice? I think I got the wonky packet tonight, so.
Okay.
Check that while we go back to, let's go back and do the transfer from, the vote to accept the donation. From the 300 committee, so Dr. Gladfelter, if you want to come up and do your presentation?
Thank you, my name's Betsy Gladfelter, I'm with the Conservation Commission. And we're here tonight, or, we're here tonight because the 300 committee is offering a donation to the town for the Kuna Mesut Greenway Heritage Trail Project. And we have two components to it, and some of you have already seen this, gentlemen, if you can just hold your. We've put together 27 interpretive signs and half of them are in the process of being manufactured right now. It's the upper half of the trail and we'll put them in hopefully before Christmas. And the second half will be put in when all the restoration is completed. The second part is, we're having a, a trailhead to the gateway to the greenway and we've been working with Stimson Studios. And David Nielsen from Stimson is here and he'll give us a brief presentation, thanks to Peter's agile use of.
Technology.
Technology.
Hi, everybody, I'm David Nielsen, nice to be here.
Welcome.
As Betsy said, this is the next portion of the gateway and the trailhead entry for this. And so as you can see on the image up here, we've been tasked with, now that the river's been restored, on the lower bog, bog portion and that the two boardwalks have been constructed here and here, Swift Crossing and. Dexter's Mill, I'm sorry, crossings. We want to create that ring road and make it accessible to everybody, so part of this project is to adjust the, the fire road that's there now for a surface that can receive wheelchairs and any other person that wants to receive and take access to the area. And part of that is, would be to add this overlook and parking lot to John Parker Road to delicately put a, a bridge crossing that arcs around to offer a view of the restored river from a vantage point at the level of the, of the road rather than down low at the river. And like the crossings, you know, we would propose this to be a wooden steel and concrete structure that would delicately sit along on the east side of the Kuna Mesut River. So that would sit in this current kind of blown out sandy area that was used during the farming of cranberries in this area. So it would be a restore, restoration of this area to add grade and create an accessible path of a material that can receive all types of shoes and wheels and heels and such and restore the vegetation to Pollinator Garden and the Cape Cod Maritime Forest. So for the parking lot, we're proposing this kind of view, you can see Betsy's interpretive signage, some of it here in the front for educational value and that you would be proposed with this arcing walkway that can give you a vantage point over the river. And to the right of this image, you could follow a switchback path through a pollinator garden down. There's a view of the fire road that we would restore to a accessible path looking north and underneath the bridge that would allow for small gathering and, and accessibility to the river. And upon the edge, we would use from the dam that was demolished to the south, the, the old granite dam where the blocks are currently stored on site, you know, slightly to the north of where we're proposing this. We would repurpose those granite blocks to create seating opportunities and retaining areas to mitigate small erosion issues that we're finding that are on that slope side. And that is basically what, all the slides that we have here, we have this model here to show you. We're trying to create a wooden and steel and concrete structure that has some interest underneath it because the path that we're proposing would travel underneath it. So this has all been possible thanks to Betsy and the 300 committee and everyone involved, so.
You're blowing our minds. That's pretty amazing.
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty elegant.
Thank you. We've been, we're working with civil engineers and our structural engineers now to finalize designs for it and so you'll see more soon. But I want to bring Jessica up because it's all possible because of her people and.
Welcome.
Thank you, David, thank you all. Jessica Rittenour, Executive Director of the 300 Committee Land Trust. And first, before I present the donation that the 300 Committee Board of Directors voted, I want to recognize the extraordinary work of the Falmouth Conservation Commission, the DPW, the town leadership, Board of Selectmen, town management in pulling this project together. It's been a significant amount of town resources and grant funding. The 300 Committee is pleased to be able to support this with a private fundraising initiative and I'll get into the details of that. But we really applaud the town of Falmouth for taking this on, it's an extraordinary effort that we're really pleased to be able to be part of. The 300 Committee has been partnering with the Conservation Commission for many years in the Kuna Mesut Greenway. And we learned about the opportunity to provide some private fundraising support that could enhance some of the work that the Conservation Commission had already planned and received funding for, for the, from the Community Preservation Committee. But the need for accessible trails, that's something that we're really working to expand accessible trail opportunities in Falmouth. So the opportunity here was to put together a $295,000 private fundraising campaign so that we could ensure handicap accessibility of the main river loop trail, which is in the lower Kuna Mesut River corridor area. So where we have the Dexter's Mill Crossing and the Swift's Crossing boardwalks already installed. This trail would connect those with a handicap accessible loop surface. And part of this is also to support the trailhead parking, we know there's need certainly for public access and parking, including the handicap spaces and the educational signage. We did have a grant from the Horizon Foundation for 500,000, or for $5,000 rather. So the 295,000 is to support the river loop trail, the trailhead parking, and then 5,000 goes towards the educational signage. I want to recognize the 300 Committee's Board of Directors and for the members of the community that provided these contributions to help enhance this project. So the announcement this evening is that we understand the project is going out to bid soon and that it's very important, you know, that the town have this funding secured as the project goes out to bid. So the board has voted to authorize the donation of the $295,000. We provide that donation with the understanding that any balance of funds not required to complete the project would be returned to the 300 Committee and we would, you know, find ways to ensure that they stay somehow for supporting the Kuna Mesut Greenway. So that's, that's the presentation.
That's just really spectacular, I just have to say, as someone who spent probably the last 20 years doing advocacy for, for folks with special needs, particularly for folks in wheelchairs and have really traveled literally all over the world with individuals who are in power chairs in particular because you don't have the same flexibility as you do in a manual chair. Nature is something that's really cut off from people with a variety of disabilities, particularly people who are in wheelchairs. And to be able to enjoy this beautiful space in a way that is sort of dignified and without risk, I mean, nature, you know, can be really overwhelming and intimidating when you have those obstacles in front of you. So to be able to plan an afternoon out and to be able to enjoy and know that this is a space that is made for your access with your access in mind is really tremendous. And I think it's just another way that this project has, I think, come from a kernel of, you know, this great idea of trying to restore a natural habitat to something that's so much grander, really, just inviting people into this place for the whole public of all different ages and abilities to utilize. This is really, we've seen a lot with this project, that's impressive. This honestly is not at all what I had in mind when I was sort of contemplating what this would look like. So huge thanks to the 300 Committee, I know it's a lot of work to go back to those, those resources again and again for so many of the projects that we enjoy in town and to all that have been engaged in this process, so impressive.
Thank you. Couple of things, this is a really amazing model too. And just wow, the, what is represented by the.
Trees.
Those are the trees.
That's what I was thinking, I couldn't quite, I'm just, just for.
It's winter.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
That's the view you have right now.
Exactly.
That's the view you have.
So that's good, and then the other thing, I mean, it's, it is so wow, and I know the neighbors have been, you know, very interested and invited. You know, when I, when I've been to Betsy's amazing presentations and including her getting into the big machinery and, and probably not for the first time. But the, is, it, this is a big change in the neighborhood. And I was curious if there, if you had gotten any comments or made any specific outreach to the neighbors because, you know, from the beginning of the project until now, it certainly is a different visual. And it certainly will have, and, you know, I certainly hope, you know, to be an attraction for lots of, lots of folks who would never otherwise have this opportunity. So I was just curious about, about that piece of it.
So we have had several public meetings, Doug's come to some of them and actually Doug had some suggestions. And one of the things I try to do on this project is listen to all the suggestions. I don't take all of them, but I do listen to them and as appropriate, try to incorporate them. And also I want to, I know the police chief is here, I just want to thank, and Peter's here. We've had several meetings with town of Falmouth personnel, DPW, police, fire in, in planning all of this.
A butters, I was thinking.
Well, mainly, I've, I, I go down there fairly frequently and I do talk to a lot of people who walk there regularly. And when, and I take them and I show them what's gonna happen.
I, if I could comment, I just think that this is a huge improvement over the first iteration where I felt like that being really enclosed was more of an attractive nuisance. This is wide open and it's just an outdoor feature that's, I think, a big improvement.
Yeah, and it kind of meets sort of what our goals were.
Yeah.
We want to have a, we want to have an overlook, but we also want to have an attractive.
Yeah, and I think.
You gave me some suggestions of places to look, which I did.
Yeah, I think this makes it more interesting too. I don't know if you're gonna be able to build it for $300,000, is that just a part of the contribution?
No, plus, that's, that's a piece of it.
Okay, right.
Yeah. Cause it will also include basically a mile long.
Right. The trail.
Trail.
Yeah.
For the lower loop.
Yeah.
And they're not exactly a butters, but our schoolchildren are certainly very much interested in this project and have been going to see what's going on. And it's gonna be a tremendous resource for them for many, many years into the future.
Yeah, well, you know, as you know, we've had over 400 students last year. And one of our main concerns having, having school groups, and this is very disappointing, I'm sure the police hear this all the time. But the school bus would stop on John Parker Road and put the stop sign out and would wait to, you know, the kids would be about to get on and cars would just zoom around that. So, so after that, I would go up and stand in the middle of the street so that people couldn't go by. But this will provide for, for safe egress and ingress.
Right.
Discharge.
Discharge, drop off.
Drop off.
Great.
So.
Any other?
And I just want to make one other, one other, I, I just want to say the other, another major contributor has been Massachusetts Environmental Trust which has paid for, along with the Horizon Foundation, which the 300 Committee, it's part of the 300 Committee donation but for the interpretive signs, which those of you who've seen the Dexter's Mill and Swift's Crossing sign, they'll, they'll be like that, but they'll be a little bit larger than that.
Yeah, that's very nice.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Any further questions before we vote?
Just, uh, thank you, if I, if I could, the 300 Committee has requested that if we do well with our bidding, if there are any surplus funds, that those surplus funds might be returned.
Yes, I think when you stepped out to get the copies, they mentioned that, yeah, thank you.
Oh, you talked, okay. So if you could note that in the vote, I think that would be helpful.
In the vote, okay. Do you have a motion?
I would vote to accept the donation from the 300 Committee, the amount of $295,000 for the Kuna Mesut Greenway Heritage Trail Project, with the understanding that any surplus funds not required to complete the project will be returned to the 300 Committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you so much.
I promise you, there'll just be one more ceremony.
It's all right, we like, we like them, we can't always go to them, but we like them.
Keep it up.
Is that platform made with a 3D printer?
Yeah, 3D printer, laser cutter and.
That's amazing.
Pretty cool. Now if you could just make it a little lighter, huh?
I know, right, if I had more time, I would have made it hollow.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Great, very nice job. Okay, we're going to return to our public hearings. And we have a liquor license violation hearing, Falmouth Wine and Spirits LLC, DBA John's Liquor Store, 729 Main Street, Falmouth. And Chief Dunn, I know that Sergeant Semino is not able to be here tonight, so I think you're going to do the report for this. I think we have to swear in the witnesses. So, let's see, this hearing is being conducted in accordance with the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 64, which requires that the Board of Selectmen investigate complaints regarding liquor licenses with the witnesses under oath. Oh, go ahead.
As everybody who's going.
I'm gonna have them stand up.
Oh, good, thank you.
In order to comply with the statute, all persons intending to testify at this hearing shall now stand. Okay, if you intend to testify at the hearing for the violation at John's Liquor Store, please stand, okay?
Please, you have to stand up.
Oh, yep, stand up, sorry, I didn't see you in the back, I didn't see, it's okay. Okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me, do you, or, do you solemnly swear to affirm, to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Great, okay, and will, we have someone please note to the record, all persons intending to testify at this hearing that they stood and took the oath prior to testimony. Chief Dunn, if you could start us off, please.
Good evening, as you said, our alcohol compliance officer, Sergeant Michael Semino, had babysit issues tonight, so he couldn't attend. But I do have his reports here. During the month of July 2019, the Falmouth Police Department conducted minimum age purchase compliance check at establishments licensed to sell alcohol in the town of Falmouth. During the operation, all alcohol beverage control commission guidelines were followed and adhered to. When a violation occurred, the establishment was notified immediately and a temporary notice was issued. On July 12th, 2019, at approximately 5:50 PM, Sergeant Michael Semino, along with Officer Josh Oliver, conducted a minimum age purchase compliance check at John's Liquors located at 729 Main Street. The underage subject went into the store with money issued by Sergeant Semino and was instructed to attempt to purchase a six pack of Bud Light bottles. The underage subject successfully purchased the six pack of beer and exited the premise. Sergeant Semino took custody of the beer and the change from the transaction and returned to the store. Sergeant Semino advised the clerk, who was identified as Michael Kidwell, that he had just sold to an underage person. Sergeant Semino issued a temporary notice of violation to the store owner, Mark Ferrera, who was on site. Sergeant Semino advised him he would receive a formal notice of the violation in the future, respectfully submitted to Sergeant Michael Semino.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions for?
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions for Chief Dunn as to the facts that he just outlined?
I guess a previous fact, do we have any evidence of previous violations within this year, the previous three years?
Not that I'm aware of.
I don't think I see that in our paperwork, so I'll find it.
Not in this establishment.
Any other questions for Chief Dunn? Yep?
It seems like there was only three stores that were involved in this investigation, is that correct? On this particular night, there were three.
Oh, that's just that night.
We do it all summer long.
I see.
Right now, the ones up before you are two that were in violation.
Right.
Great. Okay, thank you. Mr. Ferrer, did you want to come on up?
I hope I can keep my voice, I've had a bad cold.
It's been going around. Welcome, we just wanted, you heard the, you've previously received notice, and you heard the recitation from Chief Dunn tonight, did you want to add anything, or let this board know anything about this particular violation?
Unfortunately, one of my employees did serve a minor, an undercover police officer. I'm curious if that's the same officer every time that you use?
He's not an officer, he's a 19-year-old individual, and it's, for this compliance check, we were using him for all the compliance checks this year.
Okay, thank you. Again, there's not really much I have to say, except for the fact that one of my associates sold to a minor, and I realize I am responsible for that. It is the first violation in decades, so please keep that in mind.
Thank you, I appreciate that. What sort of training, maybe if you could describe, generally, do you provide to your employees regarding service of alcohol, purchase of alcohol?
Verbal training, and they're all tip-certified, all my employees are.
Do you have signage?
Yes.
Thank you, okay.
What's the general guideline as to who should be carded?
Excuse me?
What's the general guideline as to who should be carded?
It used to be 30-35, but recently we've raised it to 40-45, as far as a guideline of how old somebody looks when they come in. Excuse me.
And so you just see that as a mistake from the guideline, as opposed to...
It was during a shift change, and it's the middle of July, it was very busy.
And how long...
Again, I'm not trying to make excuses, he didn't count him. The individual did look like he was 30, so beard, all that. Would you like to see a picture?
But I'm just saying, if you're saying the guideline is 40 to 45, then your employees not even following, if he looked 30, you're not following the guideline that you're set forward. If the guideline was 30, he looked 30.
Well, since then, no, since then, I raised it to 40-45.
Okay, I guess that's what my question is, was it a...
Yeah, normally, if somebody looked 30 to 35, they'd get ID'd.
Okay. And so now, in reaction to what happened, you've changed the guideline to...
To 40-45.
40-45, okay, which is, that's something we want to take into consideration, if there's a response to the violation, that we're happy to hear about.
Yep. Any other responses to the violations, such as that one that was appreciated by Mr. Jones?
Any other responses?
Changes after the violation?
More training.
Good.
Everybody's been, you know, I've always been very strict, very strict. Obviously, that's why I have no violations.
And can I just ask you...
Now we're even stricter.
How long have you owned John's Liquor?
I've been there for 40 years. That's why I never went there.
Too strict.
Until now, now I'm over 40.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Is it possible that maybe it might have been a staffing issue as well, because it seems like, this is a Friday night at 6:00 PM, so maybe there was a line of people, and...
Well, that's what I was trying to explain, it was a busy time. And shift change, people when they first come in, you know, they're a little hectic at first.
Right.
And he let one get by.
Yeah.
And did you say, I just want to clarify, in the 40 years, you haven't had one, or you don't think you've had one in the last 20 years or so?
Never had a violation in decades.
Okay. Great. Any other questions?
I know that one of our options is to encourage the purchase of an age verification apparatus. How do you feel about those machines and their efficacy, and how will they work?
Are you talking about the ID machines? I don't know if it's as cold as affecting my ears, too, I think now.
It's the way I'm mumbling, it's me.
I looked into one of those last year, just about every year I do look into them. And I'm thinking about getting one, the only problem with that is, is most of the time that we're guiding a youngster, it's his sister's ID, or his brother's ID. Those machines will not get by that.
Right, and so the ID is...
It just happened about three weeks ago.
The ID is a legitimate ID.
It's a legitimate ID, so the machine's gonna say, fine. And that's usually what happens, they take their brother's or sister's IDs.
So there's over reliance on technology?
Unfortunately, the technology is, it's okay. But there's nothing better than a person.
Great. Anything else you want us to know?
Nothing I can think of.
Do you think, is there anything you can do at the shift change, maybe the new person comes in a little bit earlier, so it's a little overlap?
I've thought about that, yes. So it's not, especially in the summer.
Right.
So it's not so crazy when they get there.
That's something you might be doing?
Because there's a little, when they first get in, you know, there's things that have happened throughout the day, like this person was here too many times, and so forth and so on.
Right.
There's a little bit to take in.
Yeah.
So yes, I have thought about that, 15 minutes early.
Is that something you...
For an update, you know.
Something you think you might be doing?
Uh, yeah, next summer, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And do we take public comment? Does this hearing have to take any public comment? It's more anybody wants any information, or sometimes the public wants to read in about a business, local business. Okay. So there are no other witnesses that were sworn in, is there anyone else who wishes to make any public, share any public information about this particular issue? Okay, so as to our findings?
I'm moving close the hearing.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And what is this board's pleasure? This, in terms of findings, I would say that this, find that this owner has had this business for approximately 40 years, all employees are tip-certified, that he has taken steps to increase the guidelines for when his employees are to check for IDs, from 30 to 35, to now 40 to 45?
Implementing the new check-in policy for employees 15 minutes earlier, then opening the shift change at the same time.
That's a plan, that's...
Yeah, I don't think he's implemented it yet, but he's willing to, he's willing to consider it.
I think we need to include a finding, that there was a violation.
Indeed.
That it was tested by the police chief and agreed to by the owner.
Okay. And that it's the only violation that I see in our records for this business, this isn't a subsequent, that we have any...
I think our finding is, we have no evidence of any other violation within the recent past, in the testimony by the owner, as we haven't had one in decades, so I'm hopeful with that finding.
Those findings. Any further findings? No, but in terms of discussion, I think that it might even be helpful to post the sign on the new policy, that if you're not, if you don't look 40 to 45, you're gonna be asked for your ID, and that very, you know, that very piece of, that piece of information might deter folks, so even during a busy time, it may lower the chances that one may fall through the cracks. So that could be a condition that we put on a first defense policy.
Can I ask the police chief about these age verification apparatus? Just 'cause I think the owner does make a very good point, that if you put the ID through the machine, and the machine says it's valid, once you've done that, it makes it a little bit harder to question the validity of the ID actually matching up with the individual in front of you.
You still have to be a responsible person, and look at the ID, and look at the person.
Good picture.
It will tell you that, you know, if the ID is valid, but if it's an older brother or an older sister, I mean, you have to look at the person.
Right, but...
Unless they were twins or...
What's, technology steps in the way, it almost sometimes takes the responsibility away from the person to be, to make the judgment call. They say, well, the machine said it's okay, and I just worry that that's sometimes...
That's all the machine's saying, it's a valid license.
Right.
It doesn't say whether it belongs to that person. You have to look at the person, you have to look at the ID.
I don't look much like my license.
I was thinking about beards coming and going.
Okay, and as far as any sanctions for this, what we believe is a first offense, we certainly have, under our policy, a minimum sanction is a written warning with a clear indication that any further violations will be penalized in accordance with the guidelines, provided for a second offense, and a maximum sanction is up to a six-day suspension of license and/or fine of $1,000.
I think I would just point out that the second offense is a minimum of a three-day suspension, and not that I think the owner needs any more warning about that, but...
But just a reminder, it's substantially...
And I think we would put that in our written warning.
Okay. So I would say, I would be comfortable with a written warning, noting what the second offense is, and with the stipulation that Ms. Moran noted, that there's a posting of some kind of signage that says, you know, 40 to 45, you're gonna be carded, where I've seen it other, you know, if you look... So deterrence.
And I would also like to add the comment that Mr. Brown was talking about, about supporting the idea of increasing the amount of time, of overlap time, on particularly busy days during the summer. I'm not sure I would require that, but saying we're very supportive of that.
Best practice.
Okay.
I second that.
Okay.
And one of the reasons I like that is that was, as often as possible, these suggestions can be coming from the owners, and then we implement what they're talking about, I always think is the best way of handling these kinds of issues.
Business best, and where the cracks are, so, okay. With those sanctions, I had a motion from Sam.
Oh, I thought you were moving it, I was gonna second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, great. And then, that will be transmitted to you, be a letter from the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, I think that's a warning for the offense?
Yes, with what we just noted. So, a written warning explaining what the second offense is, which is a minimum of a three-day license suspension, and then the requirement to post about the increased age guideline, and then supporting your suggestion that it might be good to staff differently in the summer on busy days.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, we have a second liquor license violation hearing, Intergas Service Center Incorporated, 607 Main Street, Falmouth. Anyone intending to testify in this hearing, if you would please stand, raise your right hand. Thank you. Let me just read the announcement, this hearing is being conducted in accordance with the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 64, which requires the Board of Selectmen investigate complaints regarding liquor licenses with the witnesses under oath. In order to comply with the statute, all persons intending to testify at this hearing shall now stand. Please raise your right hand. Do solemnly swear to affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you. And will that notation be made, that all individuals intending to testify have stood and taken an oath prior to testimony? Chief Dunn, if you would explain what took place in this situation?
Again, on July 12th, 2019, at approximately 6:15 PM, Sergeant Michael Semino, along with Officer Josh Oliver, conducted the minimum age purchase law compliance check at Intergas located at 607 Main Street, Falmouth. An underage subject was sent into the establishment with money issued by the investigator, and instructed to attempt to purchase a six-pack of Bud Light bottles. The underage subject successfully purchased the six-pack of beer and exited the premise. Sergeant Semino took custody of the beer and the change from the transaction and returned to the store, and advised the clerk he had just sold to an underage person. The clerk was identified as Louis Silver. Mr. Silver was issued a temporary letter of violation, and was advised that the store would receive a formal letter of violation in the near future. Respectfully submitted, Sergeant Semino.
Okay. Any questions for Chief Dunn on this particular case?
In the previous case, the manager was on premises, since Sergeant Semino didn't say the manager was on premises, at this time, we don't know that for sure.
I don't know that, I don't have that information.
And it looks like, from the paperwork, is this the second violation?
There was a violation, the ABCC conducted a similar compliance check back in May 29, 2018. And there was a hearing held in Boston on that, and I have the copy of the decision here. I think you have it also.
Yes. Any questions from the board for Chief Dunn? Okay, thank you. Okay, counsel?
Chief.
Welcome, come on up.
My name is Richard Hob, I'm an attorney, my office is in Barnstable, and I'm here representing Intergas Service Center. I wish to ask the chief just a couple of questions, if I may?
Sir, chief?
Chief, I'd like to ask you firstly, did you personally interview the underage, the alleged underage individual sent into Intergas to determine his age?
I did not.
Have you seen personally any certification, any documents certifying this particular individual's age?
Sergeant Semino retrieved all the information.
I'm asking you.
Sergeant Semino retrieved his information, and his documentation, up to all that, state of birth and everything else.
Thank you. I just initially, just would just like to make, before I bring on witnesses, just a presentation as far as the evidence in this matter, if I may. Firstly, Mr. Sadi obviously takes our, takes his obligations seriously. He owns three businesses in the town of Falmouth, separate businesses. He wishes to run each and every business in compliance with the law. And quite frankly, if this particular individual is in fact underage, Mr. Sadi is humiliated over the fact that this has occurred a second time.
Excuse me, I guess I'm really bothered by the implication that our police chief or our police sergeant is doing anything to be suggesting the person was not of age. I think that suggestion is inappropriate, and I'm offended from our police chief and for our sergeant to be suggesting that the evidence was not appropriately obtained or suggested.
That wasn't an inference, I didn't infer that at all.
What was the purpose of the question, of checking with the police chief, to make sure that we actually had legal documentation to prove he was underage?
Well, I think, look, this is an administrative board, but it still has evidentiary standards for justice, for everyone, for everyone. The evidence should be uncontroversial, that the individual is in fact underage.
And our police chief said so.
No, excuse me, excuse me. Is in fact underage. I'm not impugning by any stretch Chief Dunn's sagacity, integrity, or credibility.
That's the way I'm hearing you.
The problem here is this, as I see it, is this, and maybe you don't, okay. There's no evidence here as to the actual age of this individual that went into the liquor store.
So here's what, let me just, I see where you're going, let me just say this. Sergeant Semino, who conducted this and was responsible for this, and can probably speak directly to what you're asking, who was supposed to be here tonight but couldn't, because he doesn't have a babysitter, basically, if you would prefer, and you want to come back at another meeting, when Sergeant Semino can be here and can give you exactly that specific answer to your question, because he's the individual in charge, obviously, this is his chief, his chief knows what the protocol is for the town of Falmouth, how we operate, I mean, I get where you're going, I'm an attorney, I understand we have to just do what we need to do for our clients, but there would be, you know, really no reason why the police department would go through all of these exercises if they didn't use someone who comported with the requirements of being underage. They've done this for many years, but if it makes you comfortable to have Sergeant Semino here to testify specifically to the concern that you have about the veracity of this gentleman's age, we can absolutely, your client has the right to have that evidence put before this board, and for the police department to have to do that. And that was the plan tonight, but things happened, and Sergeant Semino can't be here, so we're happy to put the hearing over and have him here, so we can speak directly to that issue.
That really isn't necessary. Part of, part of, what I do as a litigator, is to take the evidence as it's presented at a particular trial or hearing, and try to run with that. I'm just suggesting that when you present evidence that someone is underage, it doesn't take much to submit a certified copy of the beer certificate, that's all. Now, aside from... Now, aside from that, fine. I am not saying, I am just wondering, do the police make a mistake? Did they in fact look at a birth certificate for the individual? That's all. If you're satisfied with this, with this presentation as to being underage, then far be it for me to go any further with it. I'm just bringing it to your attention. Maybe it's something better for you to do in the future. Just have a birth certificate put in, that's all.
I believe the chief has the paperwork. You didn't seem to want it.
Okay, fair enough. Excuse me a second. And you have signed under perjury, perjury of what underage operation information that was signed by the individual inside Seminole.
Okay, fine, fine.
Okay, great, and I think that's probably in our packet.
It's its form.
Okay, great.
No, fine, thank you.
Okay, so let's, we'll move past that. We're gonna say he's underage, and he goes in, and now tell us if you will, sort of the, kind of the merits of the case.
All right, on the merits. This individual was served alcohol without being asked to present identification. Goes without saying, that's not contested here by any stretch. I have witnesses here that we have a first offense on another day, year and a half ago. As a consequence of that offense, Mr. Sadi, who is the president of the corporation and the manager of the business, put in certain safeguards. We continued with firstly training of each particular employee on how they could conduct a liquor license sale. They've been instructed and trained, but instructed that if anyone looks under the age of forty, or if you even question in your mind that they may or may not be under the age of forty, you are to card these individuals. He's also instructed them that if they wish to card everyone, regardless of whether or not they look seventy as opposed to forty, he's in favor of it. What he has each individual do is sign, and I have the original here, if I may. Once they've gone through their training, they sign this certification that they have been so trained, and that they will in fact card everyone that appears under the age of forty.
Notice this is from previous to the violation, the current violation.
To this particular incident.
So this is not following up on this violation, this is because of a previous violation.
Previous violation.
But a year later on this one.
Yes, the one I think it was referred to earlier.
And this is the employee in question?
Yep.
No, yeah, he was, he was hired April of this year.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Sadi also purchased, I have a couple of them, I wish I had more of them, the licensed identification computerized system that you referred to. Obviously, if they don't scan the card through it, it's worthless. It might as well just be a paperweight. This person didn't scan it. Another thing Mr. Sadi has done, since that initial incident, and I have the two individuals present, Mr. Ferrera and Ms. Bonds, and if you wish them to testify, that's fine, but I'll give you an overview of what they would testify to. Since that initial violation, these individuals, he sought out a number of individuals to regularly go to his place of business. Mr. Ferrera does it once to twice a week. Ms. Bonds does it several times a month, if not weekly. They go into the store and they purchase alcohol, they may purchase another product. If they're not carded, they text Mr. Sadi, we've got an issue, they get together. If they were carded, they send him a text, everything's fine. Now, Mr. Ferrera is probably marginal as to whether or not he's twenty-one. He's in fact twenty-four. We don't send anyone in, any who's a minor, because we don't want them going up a minor to the counter with alcohol, okay? He's been carded, he would testify every time he's been there, with the exception of if once they get to know him and they've seen his card, that particular clerk doesn't card him again. I think that's acceptable myself, but they have to know him. I mean, okay. Ms. Bonds has gone in there and at times has been carded, and at times wasn't carded. However, she's, I don't wanna give you a birthday, but...
You're really treading on...
Yeah, you be careful.
Dangerous territory. This is much worse than impugning the integrity of the chief of police.
It's gonna have consequences.
You can leave it there, we get what you're saying.
You have birth certificate on the card?
Now, with the new hiree, what Mr. Sadi does, and he had Mr. Ferrera do it, he focuses them to go in a couple of times a week for the initial two to three-week period during this individual's shift, and he tells them what his shift is, because they're brand-new. I mean, they're just hired. Mr. Ferrera did that, and he testified that this individual carded him on those occasions. Now, he didn't card on July twelfth, for whatever reason, for whatever reason. We have a video scanner in there, the videos, people going in and out, that's checked at times. It's only a five-day memory system. But Mr. Sadi, his assistant manager at times, will look through a couple of people, check with the clerk, make sure they're carding people. This incident got past them, but they've taken substantial measures to prevent it from happening. But you know something? If the clerk himself or herself determines they're not gonna follow the rules unless we catch him, it likely to get away with it. If they're intentionally going to violate the law, violate policy, we're still responsible, the manager's still responsible, but I think it really goes to mitigate what the sanctions might be. He's gone through a lot of effort to prevent this from happening again, but you know something that happened again, and that's why I say to you, he's humiliated over it. He's not only upset, but he's very humiliated. His other businesses around in Falmouth, the gas stations, never had a complaint. He's been there for ten years, never had a complaint. So, what I would request is this. I wish to request that you take into consideration the following sanction or decision, that you take your hearing, you've had the evidence, and you take it under advisement for two years. Take it under advisement, no prejudice. Mark it up again for two years. Hopefully it doesn't have to come up before then. If Mr. Sadi's, if Intergas has a clean record in those two years, you make a determination. Maybe you dismiss it, maybe you say, look, we wanna continue it for another year. That's fine. If there are other measures that you and your wisdom and experience are aware of that Mr. Sadi can take, Intergas can take, beyond what he's doing now, we'd welcome that. We welcome, no one's perfect. We strive for perfection, but we're not perfect. I made a presentation about underage individual that I thought was pretty good. Well, I got Mr. Jones upset. I'm not perfect, and I apologize.
You didn't show us the birth certificate of the twenty-four-year-old that you claimed to be twenty-four.
But I talked to chief, I wasn't impugning anyone's, I think it's a matter of evidence, that's all.
How do we know Mr. Ferrera's twenty-four?
Pardon?
How do we know he's twenty-four? You didn't present the evidence to support his age.
No, I didn't.
Okay, all right, go on.
I've got his, no, 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 you're right, but I've got his license, and if he testifies, he'll show you his license. But that's just a litigator litigating anything he can to get a dismissal, that's all.
I think making some mistake, are you done with your testimony?
I'm done, thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Oh, yeah. What days were the suspension of your previous height license?
May, no, go ahead, I'm sure.
You just gotta come up to the microphone, because it can't pick it up.
It was May, May, May last year, two thousand eighteen.
The two days that you didn't serve alcohol because of your suspension were what days?
It was held in abeyance.
Yes, okay.
I'm sorry, could you ask that question?
According to the ABCC, I thought there was a two-day suspension?
No, no.
It was held, held in abeyance.
And what has taken, what action have you taken in place since this most recent violation? Not since the first violation. Have you taken any steps since the most recent violation that the town conducted?
Yeah, I added, I added calendars on the computer, I added the system in the computer when you punch cigarettes or alcohol, it wouldn't go through unless we'll say check ID was a red flag, more training, more talking, spending more time there.
Did you take a look at the video? You said it's a five-day window video. You received the violation notice that day. Did you look at the video of that five-day period so you could see what had happened?
I have the video always on my phone, and I always look almost daily. I always at night when I have nothing, I watch the kids who's working, I have an assistant manager, I have it in his phone, he look, but the question exactly, what was it?
He's asking if you saw, if you went back and you looked at this particular episode.
Absolutely.
And what did you think about it?
I looked it up after five minutes ago, and I fired the kid.
So he was fired?
I fired the kid, I fired him. I mean, I feel bad, but I couldn't, you know, I have, I have to do what to do, I have to do what I have to do.
Did you feel that if you were, if you had been at the establishment, in your judgment, do you think, why, that's a close call, that guy looks like he could be thirty-five, thirty-eight, I would have let him go, or did you feel...
It doesn't matter, doesn't matter. You have to ID everyone, especially someone walking into the store you don't know. Look, you know, under forty, you're gonna ID him, that's what I ask those guys to do. If it was me and I was, I will ask him. And that machine, he show you the picture, it's so easy, cost me a thousand dollar, just like swipe the card, and will tell you, expire registration. Again, you have to look at the person, definitely, look at the picture, make sure it's that you, not your sister, or your brother, whatever. But I felt sad, but I mean, I had to do what I had to do.
But the machine wouldn't have really done anything except for require the clerk to ask for the ID, because this gentleman probably would not have had an ID in him.
Absolutely, yeah.
But the machine was...
I guess he did not ask him.
Okay.
Did you have any, anyone else, any questions?
Um, sounds like he's taken some action already. Not sure what more could be done there.
So, with your own, you know, you have a, your own force of people you hire to, sort of, secret, to look at your employees to be sure, to test them, and when did that program start?
After first, I said it was the ABC in Boston, after that started like a week. You know, I took it seriously in the beginning, but when that accident happened, I could not believe, you know, which I trained him, I explained him, whatever. And my guys, the ones who go in, not just going, see, it's a check ID, they walk around the store, they look at if the store like wet, dirty, some other person walk in, they will tell me, you know? I get sometimes videos, they take videos, they take picture at the stores, this is not right, no water, no soda, or whatever.
A question for you, one of our attorneys, any three of the, or the police chief. So the abeyance from ABCC says that it'll be held in abeyance for two years, provide no further violations of Chapter one thirty-eight. I assume this is a violation of Chapter one thirty-eight, and so the abeyance of the two-day suspension will not be held, and you, there will be a two-day suspension put forward by the ABCC, is that correct? That we submit this information to ABCC, and they will then impose that two-day suspension?
Well, why I, yes, but why I asked you if you would take it under advisement, because of the steps he's taking and how serious he is and what he's doing, if you take it under advisement, that two-day period is not going to take effect. You haven't rendered a finding, in other words, you haven't rendered a decision.
This, according to what I'm reading from the ABCC, the commission's suspending license for two days, which will be held in abeyance, provided no further violation of Chapter one thirty-eight. That has nothing to do with our decision. He has violated Chapter one thirty-eight, and so that suspension, or the abeyance, I would think would be null and void.
I think the concept is that until there's an actual decision about the violation, that would be the definition of violation.
If violation occurs when we decide there has been a violation, not when it actually occurs.
Which is what you're thinking.
Because I guess...
So that's, and so that's the, why it makes sense to look at that from, from the business's perspective, and, go ahead, no more questions.
The other, the other thing to consider is that...
Let me just finish, if anyone has any further questions.
Okay.
For either counsel or the witness.
So, in the three businesses you run, how many people do you employ?
So he made a mistake, it's two businesses in Falmouth and one in Pocasset, which each station has three, four employees, some are of course more, you know, some are seasonal, more busy.
Do you have a, sort of, the undercover team checking your employees' service?
My other stations, they don't have store, they don't have like beer and wine, they don't have cigarettes.
Okay, so it's just this one?
It's a service station, repair and full service.
Thank you.
That was my question, so he just answered.
This is the only one with alcohol?
Correct.
And how, and I have a question, how long have you had this license?
Uh, June two thousand seventeen, which is like a little over two years.
Any further questions?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any further comment that they would like, or any other evidence they'd like to offer regarding this matter?
We should have closed the hearing.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, discussion from this board, this is board's pleasure. So we have before us the requests from counsel to hold it in abeyance. If it is, if we choose not to do that, if we can clarify, this would then become a second offense, which would then require from us a three-day suspension?
I'm not sure it would, because...
Because they held it in abeyance?
No, because it's not our violation, we, we never had the first violation. This is the first I've heard of that first violation.
I would say...
So I think we are free to not do the second, the two-day or three-day suspension.
That's why I wanted to clarify.
I agree with that.
Because the first is from the ABCC, and it's not us, right?
My inclination would be to, we didn't debate at all as to whether there was a violation in our first instance, and I don't think there's any debate as to whether there's a violation this time with this company, and so we can have some findings, but one finding I think is there was a violation. There's no doubt about that, there's been no dispute about that, there was a violation. And if that's going to trigger an automatic two-days, or the actual suspension that was put forward, I think that's what's appropriate. I don't think we necessarily need to add more to that, and I think we could have other parts of our sanctions, but...
The policy states it doesn't limit the discretion of the board to take other action under appropriate circumstances. So with, one of the things in light of, you know, Doug's proposal, I'm, I'm thinking about, is that, you know, there can be, you know, we could certainly make findings today, and town council will certainly jump up and tell me if I'm off-base, we can make findings today and still do a continuance, so I'm not disagreeing, I'm just saying we, it doesn't, you know, we have choices all along the way under our policy, which is, as you, you're good at reminding, it's our policy.
But once we vote a finding that they had a violation, doesn't that...
Findings are about facts, it's not about the decision. We can hold the decision in abeyance if that's the board's pleasure, but findings, I, you know, I think that those are about facts, I, maybe town council could weigh in if...
Sam, while Frank is coming up to answer that?
I guess I wanna clarify that, that if there was, you know, it would be a suspension for the sale of alcoholic beverages, all the other business could continue on at this particular location, right?
Yes.
Am I clear about that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Frank. Could you just weigh in as to what the options are in terms of findings versus...
Yes, Frank Duffy, Town Council, you do have an alcoholic beverages license violation policy, which we put in place some time ago, and it does say as Ms. Moran has just mentioned that it allows you to suspend, revoke, or take other appropriate action with respect to any particular matter before you. I would suggest to you that you definitely should make findings a fact tonight, because this is really your only opportunity to do it. You've got the...
Fresh.
You've got the, you've got the events of the witnesses or their testimony fresh in your minds and so forth. You do not have to come to a conclusion tonight or, or make a summary finding on those facts, but you, you should at least do the subsidiary facts now.
On that, if I might, can I ask a, a quick? So, for example, we could find that an underage person was served.
Yes.
As opposed to finding a violation. So that was the, what I was trying to distinguish, correct, or no?
Like, you know, you go to trial, you get a whole lot of facts, you make the findings a fact, and then you decide if there's a violation, guilty or not guilty type of thing. So yes, you can, you can break it up that way. And that would fall within the category of other appropriate action.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer everyone's questions about that? Options available to us? Okay, any further discussion?
I see, I, I just am really confused as to why we'd even consider it. On our previous person, we found that they had a violation, even though this was their first time in twenty, maybe thirty years. We're considering that this is not a violation because it is their second instance in a year. I'm really confused why we would even be considering being more lenient on an organization that had had a previous violation than an organization that had never had a violation. If anything, I, maybe we should have heard this case first and been able to, for the John's Liquor Store, say, you know, we're gonna hold this in abeyance for two years. You've never done anything wrong. I would think I would be much more comfortable with giving them, giving them that opportunity than one that's just had one, took, I think, when our findings would, took quite significant action on their A B C C violation. I don't think they did much after our violation, and that just troubles me. And I'm not sure, there may be not much more they could do, but unfortunately, that's their business. They've got to come up with something. I think the idea that they put a calendar on their register, cash register, said, just now? Wow, the fact that it wasn't on there as soon as they got their license two years ago, didn't impress me that much.
Any other thoughts?
Well, I agree with Doug's point. Hardly fair to have found a, a violation on the previous case and then to continue not finding one here, doesn't seem appropriate.
I think we can find a violation and then.
Defer.
Continue.
Defer to the state, I was, that's my inclination.
Continue, right? I mean, I guess, I, I agree with Doug that we, I mean, nobody wants to penalize businesses that are in our community, they're good stewards. I mean, these have, these businesses have very good reputations. They in general employ really good people, and I'm sure Mr. Silva was a really nice person who made a poor decision. But at the same time, I don't think that we're applying the same standard if we have exactly, I won't reiterate what Doug just said, but I, so, you know, I, we don't, I don't want to limit anyone's business. I do think that there have been significant steps that have been taken, both since the A B C viola, A B C C violation. Sounds like significant resources were expended to try to prevent this from happening. There nev, you know, unless you're going to, unless your policy is card every single person, there's never one hundred percent way of guaranteeing it. And let, you know, people make mistakes, people of different ages assume, you know, I, I think everybody looks like they're fifteen years old now, that's under forty. And, but younger people tend to not necessarily see it the same way, so.
And if Mr. Sadi had the policy that everyone's gonna be carded, it still doesn't guarantee that every employee is gonna do it.
They're gonna do it, yes, I mean, you can't.
And I think that what he is saying is, and this employee did not follow the guidelines he put forward.
Correct.
And you can't always guarantee your employees will do what you tell them to.
So, I mean, I think I'd be comfortable if there's, if we make the finding that there was a violation. But, you know, if we're gonna continue it out a year, I mean, if that's an option that's available to us. I don't, we can't control what the A B C C is going to do.
I don't think it goes to them if we don't find it, if we don't, if we continue it, I don't think they find out about it.
Right, and the specific order is if, if there is a further violation?
That is the key, as Doug pointed out.
And this, what you're saying, if we continue it, this would not be a violation.
Then they might not even want the continuing. I mean, again, I think we have someone who's taken a lot of responsibility and tried to address it. He's not coming before us saying this is sort of, you know, just, it just happened. He's noting some things he's put in place. So it'll be the prerogative of the A B C C, what they do with this, if they do find out about it, but I would be comfortable with.
Now, let me ask a question. If we had, the first violation had been one that we had, had been done by our police department, what would you be saying now?
We'd be looking at that three-day minimum.
Well, we would have to, but no, I think my feelings personally, I think my feelings would probably, my feelings would be the same if he had still taken those same remedial measures. That it can still happen. And there just wouldn't be any room for any other discretion in terms of our.
So only because it was the A B C catching them, not us catching them, we're doing this differently? I, I feel really uncomfortable with that.
I, I, I would look at it a little differently in that in my tenure, this board has not considered the idea of a, a continuance of the actual decision.
Right, and I'm not comfortable with it.
Right, and, and your point was well-taken. I mean, I, you know, if the hearing times were reversed, there may have been a, a different thought. It's just not, you know, even though our policy says that we have wide range of discretion, we just haven't thought about that as an option. And so it's, it seems really extra punitive with the A B C C decision out there, but you're right, that's not something that we're controlling.
I think in, in my seven years on the board, I think continuance has been mentioned in the past and we've rejected it and said.
I, I don't remember, but.
We have the information, we can put him on probation, but not a continuance. Not saying, a continuance means we're not making a decision.
Right.
For two years.
Yep.
And the facts aren't gonna change. I just, I, I'm not at all convinced there's any reason, besides the lawyer suggested it, that we're considering continuance.
Right, I think you're right, it just was a novel idea.
Sam?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I hear what you're saying and I agree. I think, I'm, by no means am I trying to impugn the integrity of, of the owner and the manager. But this is a cost of doing business, you know, and you're gonna have an employee that's gonna slip up and they're gonna get caught. And I think you have to pay the penalty.
What we did last.
People are not perfect, and these things are gonna happen. But we cannot allow this to just keep sliding by and sliding by. My feeling is, it's a cost of doing business, an employee screws up, it becomes an example that you use for future employees. And basically, the consequences are gonna be the same for anybody else that screws up, you're out the door.
If I remember the last time this came up, I think it was with the Captain Kidd Restaurant in Woods Hole, where we were really conflicted, because it meant the business really couldn't open.
Right.
That you're gonna run a restaurant and say they couldn't serve alcohol for two days. Or for one day, I think we ended up choosing, we chose a day, trying to minimize the pain of it, but said, we still need to make that statement. This place at least can still run their, rest of their business, sell their gas, employees can still work, we're just saying they can't sell alcohol.
At least they're diversified.
And my feeling is that we find that they have a violation and then send it to A B C C to see what they want to do. And if they want to hold it in abeyance again, that's up to them. I'm not suggesting that we actually impose any penalty, the, the warning, written warning, saying, we appreciate what, what work they've done, but say that a violation did occur and now it's up to A B C to see if they want to make, what they want to do about their abeyance.
Okay, so the first thing we would need to do is to make our findings before we make a decision.
Right.
Okay, so. Underage individual was served. Are you writing this, Peter?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And that.
I would include a finding that a violation had occurred in eight, in two thousand and eighteen. Following which substantial remedies or attempted remedies were put in place by the management.
Okay, and that following this incident, several other remedies were put in place.
I was wondering, would it make sense to, do we want to put what the remedies were each time?
We can.
I think it's a good idea.
And this is where we were, I know we've closed the hearing, but I may not have remembered exactly the order and what things they, they did. One is to hire their own.
Undercover.
Undercover, but over age, but still undercover purchasers, to check that the IDs are being checked.
All right, quality assurance individuals, if you want to think of it that way.
He added the.
He purchased the, the swiping.
Swiping machine on the computer to indicate.
I think that was after the second one, so he, but he did purchase the actual.
The swiping machine.
Swiping machine.
The card swiping machine.
Yeah, after the first incident. Said he had additional training.
And then after this incident, he added the.
The notification on the screen.
On the screen.
Calendar.
And the calendar.
Notification and calendar on the screen.
I think he said also did, is additional training, pushed harder with the training.
And he, I mean, it's also finding that he fired the individual who was responsible.
I think it's a good point, at least that's the test of testimony.
Yes. Okay, any other findings?
Did we miss something?
He said I just added a calendar, I added more calendar, I have calendar, I added more.
Good.
Football attention for.
Okay, okay.
So added additional.
Additional calendars.
Additional calendars.
That's, I appreciate that.
And I guess, would there be a finding that it was a busy Friday night? Is there any relative?
I don't think we heard that it was busy, but it was, I don't think we heard that. I mean, we didn't probably guess it was busy, but we didn't hear any testimony about the busyness of it, so.
I guess I would, the, the other thing he did before on the first one was create the contract that he had his employees sign, saying they were, they were going to follow this, and they signed it.
Acknowledging the training, basically.
And the person in question signed it.
So he created the contract and that the, the responsible individual had signed the contract upon being hired. Any other facts? Okay, and so in terms of.
So I guess I would make a motion to have those be our findings.
Okay, such a.
Just a, a sort of question, point of indication. The Sleckman Jones noted that there was a violation that occurred in two thousand and eighteen. Do we want to specify so that it doesn't trigger a second offense that the A B C C.
Conducted by A B C C.
Found a violation in two thousand and eighteen.
Yes, I think that's, yeah, I'm for you.
So then we then treat it as our, excuse me, we didn't finish voting on whether or not these are, we have a motion that these are findings, okay? I had a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then in terms of a recommended response. I think, Mr. Jones, you were talking about going with the written warning, what we talked about with the first, with a clear indication about a second offense. I don't think frankly, there's probably much more in terms of preventative measures that can be taken. I think there's quite the kind of secret shoppers is one that we, I don't think we've heard before, and it's probably pretty effective overall. So I guess that would be my recommendation, is the letter outlining the, what's, you know, gonna happen for a second offense by this board.
I guess the only thing which is probably already going to happen is just a more careful hiring interview process.
I don't know if we can make it a requirement, but just a good sound measure to make sure your folks that you hire.
I think some stipulations we can put as a, a support of some of the systems he has in place. And I think that some of the same thing, same thing we do, the other decision was, this is what occurred and we're supportive of the contract he puts forward of the covert purchasing by younger individuals to check on it.
Of the calendar, of the notification.
In the seriousness of which he takes the offense. I mean, I think all those things are applicable and, you know.
Okay. With that as a recommended sanction, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, returning to our business, we have interview, vote, and appoint a member of the Falmouth E D I C. We have three applicants. And I'm just gonna call them up in the order that they're on our agenda, so Courtney Byrd, you would come on up.
Can I make that announcement about the E D I C interview as well, Courtney is found?
Yes.
Oh, he's in the back.
He's in the back.
Oh, yeah, he's back there.
So the E D I C has also interviewed these applicants and the E D I C did not make a specific recommendation to the board to select them with respect to any of the individuals.
Okay, this is for one vacancy due to the resignation of Brooks Bartlett. Excuse me, this is for a term ending in six thirty, two thousand and twenty-two. So come on up, Courtney, if you will. You have your application in front of us, we certainly are aware of the work you've done on other committees. If you want to just sort of let us know why you're interested in a spot on the E D I C at this point in time.
Yes, um, I became interested in this partly because I'm in the process of working with a group of people to try to get the town of Falmouth to develop a community-run fiber optic internet network, which I feel is an important economic benefit to the town. One of the people that we worked with on our committee was Brooks Bartlett, who was a, on the board of the E D I C. And he decided to join the land of the retired, and when he did that, I thought, he encouraged me actually to, to apply for this position. I am, by trade, a generalist. And I'm sorry, Sue, if you have to hear this again.
That's okay. A good presentation of.
But I'm, by trade, I'm a generalist. I went to Middlebury College and graduated in nineteen sixty-three with a Bachelor of Arts degree. And then I got a Master's degree in history from the University of Rhode Island in nineteen sixty-eight, where I focused on Russian-American diplomatic relations during the Russian Revolution. For sixteen years, I taught in independent schools. Last fourteen of which I was taught at Avon Old Farms in, in, outside of Hartford. I taught history, economics, constitutional law. I coached hockey, lacrosse, cross-country. And I also ran the school's work program. All, all of the three hundred and fifty boys in the school were required to have a job, whether it was washing dishes or driving a Zamboni. So among other skills, I learned how to drive a Zamboni. So not only could I teach history, but I could also teach Zamboni driving. So if any of you want a lesson in that, that's fine. In nineteen eighty, I decided that it was time for a change. I'd owned a house here in Falmouth since nineteen seventy-two, and my wife and I discussed it, and we decided to move up here and start a new life. When I left, it was a, it was a risk take, because I didn't have a job up here. And I left a job which I could have retired on with a nice pension. But it was time at age forty to try something else. I wasn't sure what. My lovely wife Carolyn got a job at the Enterprise as a copy editor, and I stayed home and was a housewife and raised our two children. After about a year, I decided I was interested in going into the construction business. It had always fascinated me, I guess maybe Zamboni driving was a lead-up to that. But anyway, so I undertook a dual path. The first path was to incorporate and start a business, the purpose of which was to do real estate investment and build houses, mostly on spec. Well, not being familiar with the trades, I decided, oh, the second part of this is I gotta learn what it is to be a contractor. So at age forty, I went to work for four dollars an hour framing houses in New Seabury. And I did everything from tarring foundations and sweeping floors to building walls, to all of the things, as Doug will know, that's involved with it. And as I sat there and wa, learned how to frame houses and build walls and put shingles on roofs and all that stuff, I also observed how the interactions between contractor, general contractors and their subs and all of that. And eventually, I went to my partners or the people that had hired me and I said, you, I can probably do you more service as a forty-years-old managing jobs and helping you. as a forty-years-old managing jobs and helping you develop your businesses. And so eventually, I went in on my own and some of the things that I did were, I actually did a lot of remodeling and that sort of stuff, but I also did some speculation, building some high-end houses in New Seabury, in Falmouth, and two projects down in Woods Hole and on Penzance Point, one of which involved building a fifty-eight-hundred square foot house from scratch with three hundred and sixty-degree views and then selling it. And I sold it for four and a half million dollars, which was the highest price ever paid for a house in Falmouth at that point. I also bought some land.
Courtney, quick question. So about at this time in the E D I C interview, one of us probably said, so what does this have to do with economic development? In which case, I, I wanna like pull the pieces together in the sense that, you know, the genius of putting this commission together, which is gonna change the town.
So I might just sort of add that, and then I'll get to your question. So I wa- I did thirty years of the construction thing. Simultaneously, as a side, I also was the director of the Cape Cod Marathon. And that involved eventually growing from eighty runners and seventy volunteers and a twelve-hundred-dollar budget to a thirty-person organizing committee, which I oversaw. Eight hundred volunteers, thirty-five hundred runners and a quarter of a million-dollar budget. And we turned a profit every year, which we gave back to the town. So after I retired from all that, it got to what else can I do with my time, particularly now that I'm seventy-nine and I gotta look for something to keep me out of trouble. And that got me to the initiative for the, for developing this community broadband network. And I, not knowing that much about it, I surrounded myself with some pretty good people like Brooks, like David Eisenberg, Art Gaylord and so forth, and we put together a committee. Some of you got a handout at the town meeting, a little brochure about it. So what I see is that this opportunity, which the E D I C grasped, they, when we started pushing for it and had a public meeting with ninety to a hundred people at it, a week later, we went to the E D I C and with the help of Brooks, we got the E D I C to fund a fifty-thousand-dollar feasibility study to study whether or not this really was workable in the town. And they agreed to do it, which I thought was a tremendous thing because this is right up the alley with their mission, which is to promote economic development in the town. And if you've read anything about this sort of thing, a community-based network has a tremendous economic potential as well as social and, and medical and all kinds of things. So I'm very excited about that and I think the, the E D I C in taking ownership of the feasibility study for the benefit of the town of Falmouth is a good thing. And so I wanna be a part of that. And I feel with my experience of dealing with people, knowing the town, being able to organize large groups and delegate responsibility and all of these things that one develops in their life experience over seventy-nine years is why I wanna do this. And, but it's, it's not just about furthering this network. I feel that I can bring a lot to the table with the E D I C because of my experience. And I would like to see the E D I C, you know, become, carry on and become more of a factor. And it may well be, if we see the results of the feasibility study, it may well be that the E D I C assumes a larger role in this. We don't know. That's one of the possibilities. But I very much wanna be involved.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Courtney? I think we all knew who Courtney is and all this is done, so go ahead, Sam.
I had three questions I was gonna ask everybody. You've covered two of them, so I don't have to ask that one. But, you know, businesses depend on employees finding housing and one of the goals, I think, of E D I C needs to be in the whole affordable housing area. What kind of experience do you have in that area that you might be able to bring to the E D I C as a whole?
Can I just breathe in here for a minute as the E D I C Board of Selectmen member?
Well, this is a question for Courtney.
Except it doesn't have to do with the E D I C because the E D I C's mission, it's talked about it, because there are so many housing organizations in town, the E D I C handles more of the economic development side of it and works with the housing organization. So I just wanted to give you that background because we went round and round about that because it's a very good question and a very good point. But the E D I C has, at this point in its mission, decided to work toward sort of the jobs end and then have the housing experts look at the housing. And we've even considered whether we might wanna get into like redevelopment, for example. And at this point in time, it's just, that's just not what our goals are. So I just wanted to add that point as you do your interview.
Yeah, but we're talking about enhancing community economic development and it seems to me this has gotta be a critical piece of that.
And absolutely.
So I'll leave it at that.
Absolutely, the issue of affordable housing is a major challenge for this town as well as Capewide. And, you know, all, you know, all you have to do is drive up to the Bourne Bridge at rush hour. And you see the traffic going across the bridge at night and coming the other way in the morning because the people who, you know, do the jobs can't afford to live here. I'm not sure how the E D I C solves that problem. It's a town problem. It's not just the E D I C. It's your problem. It's everybody in this town's problem. And we need to focus more on it.
I was not suggesting that E D I C's challenge alone. I'm just asking how they could possibly, whether you have some insights as to how they might be able to contribute to that element of our economic development.
Well, I, I mean, clearly, the E D I C should work with whatever groups there are in the town to foster it. But as Susan said, I'm not sure it's, it's, it's a central part of our mission, but I think it's collateral one because if the town is to grow and if it's to benefit, grow economically, all of these things are interrelated. It isn't just, you know, I'm sitting here talking about community broadband and that's great. But you've gotta have affordable housing and unfortunately, it's a tough problem. It is a very tough problem. It's intractable and everybody's in favor of it until it's actually boots to the ground.
Thank you. I don't, we could definitely talk about it all night, but we have so many more items on this agenda. Any other questions for Courtney?
Just that, I understand your initiative with the broadband has pushed you to this, you know, interest in the E D I C, but how do you see their, other parts of their role being geared towards your particular skills?
Are you talking about the E D I C?
Yeah, they're just general mission, not specifically the broadband initiative that you guys have put out there.
Well.
If maybe we can just do it in like one minute, again, not trying to cut anyone short.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that the broadband initiative is a tremendous way to extend the reach of the E D I C in terms of its function and its, the awareness of what people, what it does. I think one of the problems with the E D I C frankly, is that a lot of people don't recognize what it really does. Yeah, there's a solar array out at the, out at the dump and there's the railroad station. But I, you know, it, that's a visibility issue. And I think one of the positive things that's happened with the E D I C is they've hired an administrator. And that person is helping to focus the E D I C on its central core mission. And I think the broadband initiative, they've made a great start with what's going on down on Main Street. But, you know, to get it to every home is huge and will provide huge economic benefits, but it's not the only thing. But I think when the E D I C starts to think in those kinds of scope, they're on track. That's.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry. Yeah, just all since last week, yeah. Can't go away, you're right. Thank you.
Thank you, Court.
Excuse me. Next, we have Robert Ripley. I just wanna see, I was gonna read them in order from here.
Okay, yeah.
Welcome, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. Good evening. My intro to the E D I C was really working on a project with Michael Glasgow, the North Falmouth Library. My background, about thirty years in banking, in finance, and over the course of the banking career, I've had opportunity to work in another number of both small and large cities and towns, working with the economics of the banks of the community. While I worked on Martha's Vineyard, I actually commuted for about three and a half years every day, took a boat over every day. And part of the challenge there was, you know, really both employees, growing the, how do we get employees on the island for the banks? You know, so the challenges there was, you know, certainly affordable housing, but I think more so is having an employee base to be able to, you know, work in the banks and the industry that was over there. And that was something, working with the bank that I was involved with. During my tenure, I also started, it was also part of banking, part of a downsizing out in Worcester, Worcester, Mass. A bank had been acquired and so my division was let go and had an opportunity, actually started a company. And it was a, it was a software and accounting firm that we actually grew to be the second largest in the country before someone came in and acquired it. And, you know, which in itself wasn't a bad thing. But as part of it, as you know, the goal was really to, you know, create new jobs. So I worked for State Street for a number of years and part of it there was creating new jobs and new divisions. When we moved to Falmouth full-time a number of years ago, I got involved with the Finance Committee as I'd been on the FinCom the previous town we lived in. And I retired from the FinCom, I think it was in two thousand twelve, as the Chair of the FinCom. And right after Gary Anderson, so I had a good, good mentor there. But recently involved the Chair of the Falmouth Public Library Support Group. We did the East Falmouth Library Reading Garden a number of years ago, working with the DPW and the Sheriff's Department. And then recently finished the, the North Falmouth Library. So the, you know, in talking with Michael, you know, I guess the past six months and, you know, just trying to find out what the E D I C did, and certainly I think it, you know, Falmouth has a lot of challenges. But they're, but they're good challenges and, you know, I think any challenge, you know, you look for solutions and you move forward. And I think that, you know, one of the things that has always attracted me about this town is we do move forward and we move forward in a collaborative spirit. So, so I look at my background as a, a number of the things that I've done have, would be a nice fit for this organization, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds pretty good.
How do you feel the unemployment situation is in Falmouth right now?
I'm sorry?
The unemployment situation in Falmouth? Is it a critical crisis?
I, I don't think it's critical. I think it, you know, I, I look at, for example, is, I look at the salary studies that have been doing on the Cape and say, for example, is, you know, a lot of, I, I look at, I guess, a lot of college graduates. And it would be nice to retain a lot of college graduates on the Cape, but it doesn't happen because a lot of them, they go to Boston or they go elsewhere just because, you know, if you look at the, the high-paying jobs on the Cape, they would be in the hospital, they would be in banking at the senior level. I guess there'd be the, you know, some of the senior town folks throughout the, you know, the Cape. But, you know, what I guess I'd like to see us do is really create some, what I would call mid-level jobs, some management jobs. And part of that is getting industry here on the Cape, you know, that we would be able to do that. And, you know, I know one of the things is, you know, we have an industrial park, you know, what do we, how do we, how do we actually, wouldn't it be nice to get an Amazon on the Cape? How many jobs that would create, things like that. So I, I think there's definitely opportunity. Again, it's, it's, it's a challenge, but challenges, I think, bring ideas and people together. So I think it's, I think it's definitely a need for, you know, recent college graduates and, and middle-aged folks that wanna live here, wanna work here, but end up having to go. I mean, myself, I commuted to, you know, I commuted to State Street every day. So I, I've always had some kind of a weird commute, whether it was taking a boat to Martha's Vineyard, whether it was driving up to Quincy every day, whether, and my, my thought was, gee, wouldn't it be nice for me to get a job? Well, as far as in banking, you know, there's only so many president of banks on the Cape or senior-level jobs. So for me, it was always having to go off. So I think if we could, you know, find a way to create some of those, you know, mid-to-senior-level jobs, that would certainly, I think, retain some of the, the younger talent pool here.
Sam, did you have, you had three questions you want to ask folks? I don't know if he hit on some of them or?
He has. I just, I would throw out again that any thoughts on, you know, you mentioned that we don't have the, the kind of paying jobs that we need so that somebody that was working here in town could actually afford to live here, which is the big problem that we have right now. So you have any other thoughts on how to balance that out or at least maybe help on the, on the supply side of housing for those folks who make those modest incomes that live here or would like to live here?
Well, you know, I mean, I, I guess, I guess there's so much, you know, going on with affordable housing. How do we define affordable housing? I mean, what, what's the, I, I guess the mix? I mean, you know, the reality is, I look at some time and I see a lot of the new developments that are going up in Falmouth. I mean, I live over by Tony Angel's Farms and there's probably, in the last eighteen months, there's twenty new homes that have gone up and they're all starting out at, I think, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, certainly a recent college graduate, that would be tough. Cause up in Worcester, a recent college graduate would maybe something in the two seventy-five, three hundred range. So I look at down here and say, well, wait a minute, where's, and where's the paying jobs for that down here? So, you know, I, I certainly recognize the, the problem. But it, and so I look at the solution saying, okay, where, where do we build houses, you know, in the, in the two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollar range? Are there builders willing to do that? Is there infrastructure willing to do that? The flip side of that is, okay, is retaining, you know, workers, we, we need to find ways to bring industry into the town. You know, that will create, you know, it's not, not like we have to create a thousand mid-level jobs, but it would certainly, if we created, let's say, if we had a target and say, okay, we wanna create a hundred, you know, mid-level jobs, how do we do that? What, what industry does it look like? And, you know, it's, it's, it's a challenge, but it's not undoable.
Doug, did you have a question?
Uh, no, I just.
I'm sorry, was that, did you have any more, Sam?
No, I, you know, it is the dilemma that we have.
It is.
I agree that we could look at it from both sides, but I mean, I mean, one thing you can say is building houses is creating jobs.
Well, I, I just, I like your tract on creating good-paying jobs because I think that's the key role for E D I C, so.
And is their mission.
Right.
Yeah, and I think it can be a happy medium. It's great that, again, you know, a lot of people make the decision to retire down here. But gosh, I think just having the mix of, you know, almost like a, a college town where you have that mix, it just, I think, I think it's just more beneficial for, you know, the entire town.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, and then we have our last applicant, Thomas Franti. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Thomas Franti. I am the Director of Planning and Construction for Mashpee Commons Limited Partnership. It's the development company building Mashpee Commons. We've been here in Falmouth for a little over sixteen years. My wife is born and raised here. When the opportunity arose for us to come back, for her to come back, for me to join her coming back, we jumped at it. I have three kids that are all born and raised here in, in Falmouth as well. I deal with economic development decisions every single day, from the, the micro, looking at really how it impacts our development, really to the macro, to see how it impacts the town of Mashpee and the region as a whole. I do a lot of stuff with local government in Mashpee. I do a lot of stuff with the town. We work with. I do a lot of stuff with the town. We work with the Commission quite a bit as well. And it was really my involvement with, with some of the work the Commission is doing that got me interested in joining something like this. When the Commission started their review of their comprehensive economic development strategy, I was part of their, sort of their small group breakout sessions. We went and had a, a meeting together and then broke up into individual groups and sort of focused on key pieces and just my role in construction and development. I focused on that area a little bit. We, we look at, at things, you were talking about housing. And, you know, it's interesting that the economic development, the EDIC doesn't really focus on housing, but you really can have economic development with hous, without housing. And, and the reason is because the paradigm has shifted. It used to be that a job would go locate somewhere and then a mass of people would go to that job. It's now, jobs go where there are people. And one of the things that we're seeing right now in, in my job, we're building a, an office tenant space for a coworking space. And it's because there's a need for that. There are people that are looking for some of those sort of short-term, small office spaces because they're starting to become a critical mass, just with what we're doing, just in Mashpee Commons. And I think part of the reason that I would really like to be involved with this is just seeing my kids growing up here. I would like to see Falmouth become more sustainable, more resilient. And, and I think just involvement in the EDIC is an opportunity to do so.
Great, thank you. Go ahead, Sue.
So I, of course, was at that study group because I chaired the Barnstable County EDIC. And, but I apologize, I wasn't there for your interview. I was very impressed by the specific community outreach that you've done, the really deep dive for Mashpee Commons expansion. I was just, if you could give me a couple min, you know, minute on how that came about?
Mashpee Commons has quite a bit of land left to develop. When they started in nineteen eighty-six, which was before I started with them, they had to develop the master plan, but as things have grown, we sort of shifted gears a little bit to really figure out what it should be. And the core of Mashpee Commons is, is very high-concentration commercial. But we also have seventy-seven residential units in there. It's starting to create that neighborhood, create that mass of, of people that really spur development. We have eleven hundred jobs. As we started to look at the rest of the land that we control, it was really starting to figure out, well, what do we want to do with that? And, and really, it's not what do we want to do with it, it's what does everyone else think we should do with it? So about three years ago, we started a very detailed community engagement process where we held visioning sessions. We held them at the library, at the planning board, we went to the, the tribal center, we held one there. And it was basically, come in and you tell us what you think we should have at Mashpee Commons. And it was really, really informative for us to listen to the, the town's people. And we actually invited people outside of the town of Mashpee to come in as well. Anyone that felt that they were a stakeholder in Mashpee Commons. Jim Fox, who was the Chair of the Falmouth Planning Board at the time, attended at least one, if not two, of our sessions. That led into a deeper dive into our Tuesday talks where we looked at housing, not just affordable housing, just housing in general. Because the Cape doesn't have an affordable housing problem, the Cape has a housing problem. Eighty-two percent of our housing stock is single-family homes, thirty-five percent of our homes are second homes. So when we start talking about how do we retain youth, we retain youth by branching out a little bit from single-family homes into other things like apartments and duplexes. We looked at infrastructure, we looked at all those things. And then it culminated with a, with a week-long design charrette where we basically just camped out in a storefront. We were open twenty-four hours a day. I know, because I was there for twenty of those each day. And anyone could come in and sort of see what we were doing. And it really started to formulate our, our concepts for what the plan could be for Mashpee Commons. And really, the bulk of what we're trying to do right now is, is trying to incorporate housing into our development.
Just a quick yes or no after that?
Yes.
So, because I constantly hear, as I do these forums, well, why can't we have something more like Seven Oh Four Main, I think it is, or Mashpee Commons? Is that an example of form-based zoning, would you say, or yes or no?
No, no. Form-based, form-based code was sort of a, a concept that came out of our charrette. Mashpee Commons, if you really look at what we have currently, it sort of fits some of the framework that a form-based code would follow. But more of what we do is more of an architectural code. So a form-based code looks at a larger area, whereas ours is still not use-based because we have mostly mixed-use buildings in there. And Seven Oh Four Main is another example of a mixed-use building. It's not necessarily a form-based code, but it is, it is changing the concept between single use to mixed use.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other follow-up questions?
No, I think that was a good explanation of his experience and position.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so three very qualified candidates for one current position.
In the current EDIC, there are six people involved, already on it. Do we have someone from industrial development already on there?
So the short answer is no, but I would like to just mention, when we were looking, when we saw the applicant pool was wider than specifically within the statute, I got a legal opinion that allows the EDIC to expand the membership outside of the statute because we already satisfy the, the scope within the statute. That, that being said, I would, you know, I have a bit of a concern, well, what if someone resigns? You know, how does that change the makeup of the board in terms of the statute? So I think it's an, it's an issue, but it doesn't kind of pigeonhole this board, certainly.
But you do have someone involved in industrial development already?
Industrial development, not per se, I would say maybe our, you know, I, I'm gonna say probably Mike Galasso is the one we, that we believe, and also Chris.
Similar.
Similar, thank you, yes, exactly.
Financial matters?
Uh, financial, we have our treasurer, oh, gosh, it's late for me.
Did you just say Chris?
Uh, no, it's because he's fairly, yes, we have, we have a finance.
And real estate matters?
Yes, we, we checked that before we took these applicants. Yep, thank you. Sorry for the belabored response.
Okay. Any other questions or thoughts from this board?
I'm prepared to move that we appoint Thomas Feranti to fill this position.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on this, or?
Uh, go ahead.
No, you know, my, my reasons, I could just explain them, is this, I just was impressed with the overall concept of what it takes to develop, you know, an econo, a stronger economic base for a particular community. And it seems like he touched on a whole series of factors. And his experience in Mash, at Mashpee actually could easily be applied to, to Falmouth.
All right, any other?
I would kind of recommend Mr. Ripley because of, I think he has the kind of acumen to reach out and draw business here, which is, I think, something that we might want to try to do.
So let's vote this. With that being said, let's vote this. We have a motion and a second. And so if this doesn't, then we can kind of, is there further conversation? Do you want some further?
For a discussion, I'll, I'll also just say that Courtney has been integrally involved in the major project of the EDIC, which is the broadband use. That we, we have certainly workspace projects and, and other things going on, but that, that's the, the key component of the EDIC work for this year.
For which I am very grateful.
And very involved.
Right.
But any event, so we, I know we have the other vote, but I just want to get that out there, okay?
My reason for seconding is I think that I see the EDIC as really being responsible for looking at the unemployment rate in the town. And that, as I read their charter, is to make sure that we are doing it best we can to make sure that we have jobs in this town. And I think Mr. Feranti's answers gave me assurance that you'd be best suited for fighting for that.
And just along those lines, really jobs across the board. So while I, I definitely appreciate the conversation about that need for sort of those middle sort of pay range and retaining college graduates, we also have lots of folks who stay here and that are kind of chronically cycling through because they don't have some of the training or the redirection to get into, you know, some of those jobs that you might see at a Mashpee Commons that are, you know, stable, good-paying jobs, close to home, that you can maybe work your way up or use as a springboard to other things. So I think those types of jobs are equally important for folks who want to stay here and maybe don't go on and do sort of secondary or extended education. Okay, any further discussion? I need a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Aye. Okay, all those opposed?
Not really opposed.
Congratulations. Thank you to all of our applicants. We really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We stay involved, which we need everybody.
Yes. Frequently, there's movement on these boards and Courtney's still gonna be doing the work he's stuck doing with, he has a passion for, for broadband, so. All right, next we have, we have a report from the Commission on Substance Use. We apologize, it is much later than, but you know, you know, Beverly, how this goes. This isn't your first time. You know the timeline.
Unfortunately, though, I guess my PowerPoint isn't there.
I, yeah, I, I, apparently the software decided this would be a really good time to update the Windows software. It may just be, we may be okay.
Oh, I think we're gonna be okay.
Oh, that's a beautiful picture, by the way. It's just two, two slides early.
Peter, while you're doing that, how much conversation does the board feel we need on the CWMP, the recommendations that were given to us? Did folks feel like this memorandum that we were given sufficiently summarized what we were concerned about?
Yes, and we, we had a great presentation before, that, you know, there was a, some outreach to find, you know, if folks had questions, the questions were addressed. I'm ready to move that for approval, if you want to.
I, I just think we do need to point out, some of the recommended amendments, I think, are not significant. But it is quite significant to postpone the submission of the Oyster Pond CWMP.
It's just a computer.
I just think not to say that that's a recommendation. And I'm not sure we need discussion about it. I think it makes a lot of sense what's being suggested.
To announce it, yes.
That's being delayed until the other one's done and then we'll move forward with that. But I think just to announce that this is gonna delay that by about six months, if we vote this recommendation.
We'll, we'll return to that. I was trying to sneak it in while you were, I didn't know how long that technology was gonna take to load, so. Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you to the board for having us here tonight to talk about what we did in FY nineteen. And of course, you got our report in July, but, so I'm just gonna go over a couple of highlights. And I'm Beverly Costas Seavola, and I was the Chair in twenty nineteen, I'm now the co-chair. So I don't have to have the responsibility all by myself. But, so, you know, just a few things of what we did throughout the year. From July twenty eighteen, we had presentations from Wellstrong with Amy Doherty, the gym that is specifically for people who are recovering. We had Bill Doherty from Recovery Without Walls, him and his wife come and do a presentation, particularly around the acupuncture that they're using with the women who are in their program, which is extremely fascinating and seems to be really a very forward-thinking way of putting, getting recovery going. In October, we had Diane Malloy from the Falmouth Board of Health. We really want to be able to partner with, with the other boards because we think particularly the Board of Health really makes sense for the Substance Use Commission to, for both of us to know what we're doing in this area. We've had Vera Haru and Kim Slade from the Barnstable County Regional Substance Use Council. A number of times, Kim tries to actually come to most of our meetings. Because we really think it's important that we align the work that we are doing with the Regional Substance Use Council. In February, we had five sober housing managers attend our meeting. We wanted to get a conversation going about what does really good housing look like for someone who's in recovery? And I think we had some good conversations around that. In April, we had a couple of our members participate in the Recovery Cafe that was put on by the Barnstable County Substance Use Council. And in May, we renamed ourselves the Falmouth Commission on Substance Use. And I won't go into why that name was changed, but it was a good, good choice. In June, we attended the forum that you guys put on around treatment facilities and sober living. And really, you know, took back some of what we heard and learned at the forum to our own meetings. And then in this fiscal year of twenty nineteen, we supported Together We Can Celebrations After Prom Party for two thousand dollars, something we've done almost, I think, every year since the inception. And the Heron Project, we gave a scholarship for eighteen hundred dollars that was specific for a Falmouth resident. And we spent twelve hundred dollars on marketing and prevention materials. This being, so we have these bags made up and we use them at a lot of the events. This one also, My Choice Matters, which is the Barnstable County site around substance. And then there's multiple handouts, and I'll give this to you, Megan, and you can pass around. Suzie has plenty of these back at the office, and so if everyone, you know, wants one at some point, we can certainly get in, get them to you. But we thought it was important that we have these kinds of materials available when we are doing a presentation or, you know, as members of the Commission, we are somewhere where we think that people might be able to use this information. And so we also continue to partner with the Prevention Partnership through Gosnold. I sit on there as sort of the representative from the Falmouth Substance, Falmouth Commission on Substance Use, so I can keep up to date with what Gosnold is doing. The, the AIDS Support Group of Cape Cod, the Falmouth Schools Vaping Task Force. Both Suzie and I have, have sat on that. The Falmouth Police Department and the Hidden Plain Sight Trailer, which is another place that we have those bags with that information so that when a parent goes through that trailer, they can just, they can come out with a bag of information. And, and the Barnstable County Substance Use Commission, and lots of other entities that are doing substance use prevention and to meet the challenges of what's going on in our community. So how can the community help us to move forward in twenty, FY twenty twenty and beyond is become a Commissioner or come attend one of our meetings. They are posted on the town website. It's normally the fourth Thursday of the month at five-thirty at the Gus Canty Center upstairs. This month, however, due to Thanksgiving, and next month, due to Christmas, it will be on the third Thursday, so our meeting is this week. And what have we done so far in twenty twenty, FY twenty twenty? In September, we gave three scholarships to sober housing managers to attend an all-day workshop on sober home management. That was a two-day conference and we paid for one day for them. And in October, we sponsored events for Recovery Month. We did a recovery art show at the Falmouth Art Center, which had two receptions. One in which a teacher who was giving art lessons to recovering champion residents and another where artists had talked about his own recovery process through his art. And also just, oh, we, and we had an education resource tonight for service and trade industry. It wasn't as well-attended as we would have liked, but we're working, you know, these are two things that we want to continue. And it says October, but that was also in September. We want to promote these for next year to continue sort of this Recovery Month theme. And also, we brought before you guys the proclamation which you read. So I don't know if you have any questions for me, I didn't want to make this too long, but I just wanted an opportunity to just say, you know, we're trying to figure out how it is that the Commission fits in with how the town and the community want to respond to the opiate, the trauma that our, our community is going through. Personally, I work with grandparents who are raising their grandchildren, I run support groups. And every one of the grandparents that I'm working with currently, and there's about fifteen of them, have their grandchildren because of opiate addiction. So I know how important it is that we come up with some resources, not just for the person who's in recovery, but for their families and their loved ones also. I just started a grief group in Hyannis for those who've lost a loved one to substance use. And I'm trying to promote one here in Falmouth. So there's lots of things that other, that we're trying to piggyback on, but the Commission really wants to hear from the community because we don't want to make any decisions about the direction of our prevention work in a vacuum. We want to hear from all of you and we want to hear from the Falmouth community, which is why, again, I want to encourage you, come to our meetings. I think we have at least one opening, possibly two, Commission, Commissioner openings. And we really want to, you know, we're, we are committed, the few of us that are there are committed to making this Commission a, a really important one for the town and the community. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you. And do you want to just introduce the members that are here because they've stayed all the way until nine, nine forty? Thank you. And do you want to just introduce the members that are here, because they've stayed all the way until nine, nine forty?
I'll let them come out and introduce themselves as the.
All right, good evening, everyone. Chad Faulkner, I was appointed graciously by you to the Commission. I'm now co-chairing with Bev, and I think bringing a little bit of new vibrancy to it. And I can't thank Suzie and Bev enough for what they've done. But I'll let Bev do the presentation, since I came on a little bit further in the year, so she's much more knowledgeable about it. So, just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, Sam?
Yeah.
Oh, is, is there anybody else here?
Suzie, Suzie, she's our, Suzie, I'm, sorry. She's our liaison to the town, and absolutely, we couldn't do anything that we do without, without Suzie and her whole department. They've just been wonderful for us.
Yep. My question really is, you're deeply involved in this whole issue, and looking, I'm sure, across the world, not just in Falmouth. Do we see any light out there that would suggest that we now have some sure methods by which we can begin to mitigate? I know it's not solving the problem, but at least mitigating, and, and also providing the support to all of those collateral damage that's being done to families and children?
So, I, I think we've made headway. I don't think we're anywhere near the end of this epidemic, unfortunately. And, and I don't, and, and that's because of, you know, the, the drugs that are being brought in from China and Mexico, and the amount of fentanyl. And so, you know, I think it's a, that's why prevention is so important. It's why we support, you know, AIDS Support Group of Cape Cod in the work that they're doing with needle exchange, and trying to make things safer for those that are addicted to live their lives. You know, we need to look at this as a brain disorder, a brain disease, and not a choice. I think that we do our community members who are struggling with addiction a disservice when we say they've chosen this life. I think that it's a brain, it, I don't just think it, I know it's a brain disorder. And once you are addicted, just like with anything else that addiction brings, food, cigarettes, anything, it's hard to break that cycle. And so, I think just being a town that's supportive, and I think we are, the way we've embraced the sober housing here, everybody might not like it, but it's, but it is here in Falmouth, and we're trying to do our best with it. So, I think we have a handle on how we need to move forward, but in terms of getting those types of drugs off the street, I don't think we've, you know, I don't think we're there. And I don't know when we will be.
I just want to say that I think, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I appreciate the response.
Go ahead.
Why do we even have fentanyl? Who makes it, and what is it for?
It's a real drug.
It's a real drug, yeah.
A real drug for people who are, you know, generally terminally ill with.
It's created for cancer patients.
It's anesthesia.
And then people learned how to make it in their basements. So, you know, it just, it, you know, and it blows up from there, so.
So, it's mostly homemade?
Well, I don't think it's homemade, but I think that it's not necessarily.
Black market.
Off mark, yeah, it's not necessarily being prescribed by the, you know, the pharmaceutical companies.
I will say, I know it's not popular to say that it's a choice, but I know when my daughter was little, and when I was in high school, I remember somebody saying to me, hey, so-and-so's got heroin, do you want to try it? And I said, no, thank you, I got enough problems without heroin. And that person is dead, and a lot of people from that generation who did decide to try it are dead. And when my daughter was little, I remember telling her that. And I said, you know, you had a family member that died of it. And it was that conversation that made her decide not to try it. If, I don't know if she ever even had it, an opportunity. But I think that's one thing that parents need to talk to their kids about.
Oh, absolutely.
Because the same thing with my stepsons, we had that same conversation with them, and it was a choice that they had to make later. And they did, and now they've got some friends who were offering them to try it. And those kids are really in trouble now, and luckily, our kids are safe. But I think we got to talk to these kids.
I, I agree, and I'm by no means an expert. And, and I agree that when you make the decision to try a drug for the first time, that is a choice. But I argue that once you try it, and the addiction gets into your brain.
I agree with that.
The choice goes away. And for a lot of people that became addicted, it came from having an injury, and being on other types of opiates that then became unavailable to them.
That's true, too.
And then they go to heroin. And then the other piece I see often with the grandparents that I'm working with, is that there's a mental health component. And so, the person is self-medicating because they're bipolar, or they have, you know, they're, they have schizophrenia, or whatever. And so, they're, instead of taking their regular medications, they self-medicate, and they use these drugs for that. So, I think people come to it from different avenues, but I think the result is the same. And that is that we have this community that is suffering, not just the people who are in the throes of addiction, but all of us that are around them, the people that work with them, the people that have employed them, their family members, their children, their future children. So I think it's, it's up to all of us to find solutions. And I think, in order to find those solutions, we have to keep compassion in our heart at all times.
Absolutely.
One of the things I would love to see, just along those lines, is just that, you know, some more of that work that you're already doing about, when we talk about prevention, right? So it encompasses addressing unmet mental health needs, and, you know, unaddressed trauma. Lots of folks come into this from sort of, you know, traumatic experiences that, you know, lend themselves to, to, again, self-medicating for, for many reasons, right? So I think some of that, looking at prevention, yes, it's important to have the conversations with children. But, you know, people come at ver, from very different places in terms of their, their coping, you know, their ability to sort of say, and make choices, and say, this isn't a good choice. So I think, looking at some of those commonalities that bring people to places where they're faced with this, and they make a certain choice versus the other, you know, I think that that's an enormous piece that is just, you know, we see people cycle through, particularly, I say to my job in the courts. It is just like unmet mental health needs, and unmet trauma, undiagnosed and unaddressed trauma, over and over again. And, you know, we, I mean, most of the folks that come in, that's part of why, you know, and that connects with criminal behavior, and you kind of go down a whole nother path. But I would love to see us looking at some of those, those, and I know Human Services tries to address that, but thinking about, maybe there's a target area that we focus on for, you know, a period of time, that we really do some education around some of those, connecting people with resources for, for their kids and for themselves, but.
And it is about connecting all those silos, because it's about co-occurring disorders, right? So people don't walk into addiction.
With one.
With one thing, just like a person that doesn't have housing, doesn't walk in and just say, I don't have housing. They also say, I don't make enough money, I, you know, I have whatever, illness in my family. So it's the same thing with, with, with addiction. And I, you know, I also do a lot of suicide prevention work in my, you know, day job. And there's a lot of connection between this, you know, recovery and addiction cycle with, with suicide. And so, we need to look at, instead of looking at all of us as silos, we need to be forming some kind of pathway in between, so that we can look at all of these things and bring them together. Otherwise, we're not going to make any headway. It has to be a more concerted effort to bring parties together. And again, that's why I will say, it's important for the community to get involved. Maybe you don't think you have anything to contribute, and, and I would beg to differ and say, just your being there makes a difference and makes a contribution. And you never, this was not where I expected to be. Again, I, you know, I don't have addiction in my family, I don't, and I certainly have people that I know, but I came to this because of the grandparents. And, and this is where I've ended up. And I think that all of us could probably find some kind of connection, and make it worthwhile, to at least take the time to come to a meeting and see what we're all about.
What time are those meetings?
Five thirty, so this Thursday at five thirty. And we'll get that agenda out tomorrow.
And if you let us know about some of those events, and I know you have, but one year coming up, you know, we can try as much as we can to kind of, I have to, I will admit, I didn't know about the second, knew about the Falmouth Art Center one. I guess I missed the education resource night event that you had. So, whatever we can do to help to publicize some of that, and happy to do.
We did that convention with, with Suzie's department, and we would have liked to have seen a better turnout, but, but it starts a conversation, right? So, we have a lot of trades here in the Cape, and that's where we're seeing a lot of addiction. It's also where we're seeing a lot of suicide. So there again, you know, you want to make that connection. And, you know, we want people who are coming out of treatment and going, and, and in ongoing recovery. And if they can't be employed, right, if no one's willing to employ them, then what happens? They fall back into that cycle again, right? Because depression sets in, and they don't have any way to, to support themselves and their families. And so, you know, encouraging people in the trades who have businesses to take a chance, like the owner of Seafood Sands, and his name escapes me right now.
Mike Lewis.
Mike Lewis, who, you know, very openly says, I, you know, I will give anybody a chance, and, and he does, so.
And there are other individuals who are in business owners who are openly in recovery themselves.
That's right.
For many years, and are willing, so helping to connect people like that, I think, is really tremendous.
And I'm sure you know this, but just the, the other part of the triangle there is Gosnold's willingness to work with employers, and the, make the resource readily available as quickly as possible.
And, and I will just say that, you know, one of the things that we decided when we did our strategic plan a couple of years ago, was to focus more on families and adults than the youth, because we felt like the schools and Gosnold through the Prevention Partnership were already doing that piece, and we didn't want to step on any toes. We're there to support them, we, we do things like their Above the Influence. You know, I go and volunteer there every year when they have that, and we have our materials there. But we really wanted to say, okay, then what can we do for the families? And what can we do for the adults who are, who are in recovery and really want to make a difference, so.
Thank you very much, thank you. Thanks for hanging in there. All right, we have our Police Department Quarterly Report. Chief Dunn.
Hello again. I'll be brief.
We should have scheduled your two things a little closer together.
Could have run, could have run right into it altogether. Just give you a quick update on the Police Department for the third quarter of the year here. Total funded positions, sixty-three. Vacant positions, we have nine right now. Let me talk a little bit about that before I move on to the rest of it. Out of the nine, we just recently called for a list for eight to hire, and we've given seven individuals letters of conditional offers that going through the process of the psychologicals and the physicals. The hope is to get them into the academy, the Cape, the new Cape Cod Academy out at Joint Base Cape Cod, February seventeenth. So, that's, that's what we're working towards.
Does having that facility turn your time around a little quicker?
No.
No, same thing.
There's been, there's been a, a lot of changes with the MPTC, which is the Training Facilities, across the Massachusetts right now. The original director has left and is a temporary director. And what we're hoping is this new director comes from the law enforcement side. And he has promised chiefs across the Commonwealth that there will constantly be academies going. Instead of a, a group of them going at one time, there'll be rolling academies. So, we're hoping that will get us a little bit quicker. So, like I say, we gave seven out of the eight positions. We are calling for a new list once this list is closed, and hopefully still can get that eighth person into the academy. The ninth vacant position was, we just had an officer who just decided he wanted to move on, and has left to go to Florida, because that's where his family is, so he left last week. I have one out on sick leave, not related to the job. I have two out on light duty. I have two out on line of duty. I have one on paid administrative leave, which leaves a total, including myself, of forty-eight officers working for the Police Department right at the moment. Our summer went well, we hired seven people, they did a great job. They're really truly ambassadors for the town of Falmouth. We've kept a few of them on through the winter here to assist us with Woods Hole and Main Street on weekends. The business people, and I think the community as a whole enjoy having them there, gives them a little peace of mind and some comfort. So we'll continue with that. Amount of calls in this third quarter, self-initiated calls, there were three thousand one hundred and thirty calls. Dispatch calls, six thousand and thirty calls, for a total of nine thousand one hundred and sixty calls for service. Domestic violence in-progress calls, we've had seventy-two of them. Domestic violence pass calls, nineteen. Domestic disturbance calls, those are calls that come in as a possible domestic, until we can vet out whether it is or not. We've had a hundred and ninety-five of those. Out of the hundred and ninety-five, forty-nine of them were domestics, actual domestics. Some of them just may have been a verbal argument. Restraining orders served, fifty-five. Restraining order violations, we've had ten. We have, we've had three robberies, one arson, nine sexual assaults. Commercial break-in and entries has been five. Residential break-in and entries, there were fifteen. I'm also pleased to, you may have seen the enterprise this week, or in their, in their court report, we've recently had an uptick in B and E's, residential's in cars. We made two arrests the other night, so that should take care of that problem, because we've recovered a lot of the property from those breaks. So we're pretty sure we have the right individuals. Larcenies, we've had a hundred and five. ID theft or fraud, there's been thirty. Drug, as far as drug charges, for Class A, B, and D, there's been twenty-three charges there. Firearms offenses has been eight. Overdoses. Thirty-nine in the third quarter of this year.
Fatal?
No, thirty-nine overdoses, overdoses resulting in deaths, two. Narcan used by the Police Department, six. Police have served forty-one Section thirty-five, which are alcohol, drug middles, and thirteen of those. We've also sought, and these are all sought by members of the Falmouth Police Department, Falmouth hospital staff and family members. Home visits, we've done seventeen. We continue to do that with partner with Gosnold. People who have accepted treatment on the initial visit, four. In a total reference to detox, including people who were familiar with our program, and sought help either through Gosnold, through our police liaison at the Police Department, five. So in this quarter, we've had nine people who have sought help for, for this addiction. Three of them are female, and six of them were male. Mental health issues, which you heard a few minutes ago, they are connected, the mental health. The Department has gone to sixty-six calls for service related to mental health issues. Last year, two thousand and eighteen, at this time, we had fifty-two calls for service. We've partnered with Falmouth Human Services, Mark Abbott, and our offices, Senior and Nabon, have made twenty-two home visits with eight individuals receiving services from those visits. So, again, productive, and we'll continue doing that. Upcoming events, some of the events that we, one event we just finished was the Pink Patch Project for the month of October. Officers were allowed to wear pink patches. We sold patches this year, and we sold T-shirts, it was new. And we had some partners, we partnered with the Town Hall, the Clerk's Office assists in selling them. But the, we've had banks assisting us this year also selling them. So, I don't know what the funds were raised so far this year, we're still tallying them. And all that will be given to the Cancer Center Hospital. You may have seen the last week or two, our offices have started to grow beards. There is a no-beard policy. However, for the month of November, they are allowed to grow beards, it's No Shave November. And many of them have partnered with Homebase No Shave, which is, all the money raised will go to benefit veterans. And some of our offices will be going up to Fenway Park on December third to have them shaved. So, it's a, it's a, it's a great program. Also, another program that we just got enrolled in, it's called the Bucket Brigade for Vets. We participated in it last Friday. Several towns on the Cape, we met in Yarmouth, and we convoyed to Fall River. And it's a joint effort with the Massachusetts Military Support Foundation, Home Depot, and Joblot. And what we have at the Police Department, and I'm meeting with Don Lincoln tomorrow. What we have at the Police Department, thirty-four Home Depot buckets. And each of those buckets contain a brand-new winter jacket, gloves, hats, and some other personal supplies in there. So we're going to be working with that to find veterans who are in need, and we will see that they get those. We also are going to participate, we have going on as Stuffer Cruiser, as usually every year we've done. Everything that we raise, we'll go to the Falmouth Service Center. Uh, everything that we, uh, raise, uh, will go to the, uh, Falmouth Service Center. So it stays local for our, uh, families here. Uh, some key dates, uh, eleven-thirty, uh, at ten o'clock, we'll be at Walmart. Twelve-seven, at eleven o'clock, we'll be at Walmart. And twelve-fourteen, at noontime, we'll be at Walmart. And, uh, people can come on down and, uh, meet, meet the officers and, uh, donate an unwrapped gift that will go to the Service Center. Also, on, uh, twelve-twelve, at five P.M., uh, we'll be at the, uh, we'll have offices at the British Beer Company for the tip of cop. And money raised from that will benefit the Special Olympics. That's what we're doing at the Falmouth Police Department as well as fighting crime. I'll take any questions.
I just have, just, you know, given the late hour, I just want to maybe have this conversation at a, at another time. But, um, forty-eight officers is, is just like so bare bones, particularly when you start hearing some of the numbers of the things that you're responding to. And so I recognize that we're working hard to try to staff up for those other funded positions that aren't filled. But I, I definitely think we, you know, should return to the subject matter. I understand some of those are, are some temporary things, hopefully, you know, with people being out. But that, I think, just leaves our officers stretched so thin. Um, and how they continue to be able to meet all the needs in our community is really astounding because that's a very small amount of men and women for all of the numbers that you've just read off to us.
I'm not going to disagree with you, but I've been having that conversation with the town manager and positive results will, are coming, so. But again, a lot of it is getting, getting them hired, hired, getting them in the academy and get them out and trying to keep up with those who are retiring or moving on. So it's, it's a, it's a, it's a revolving door. We will never be at full staff. Whatever that staffing number is. We, we, we tried to get to that goal, but it's just, is always something that's happening, officers being injured and, and things like that. We're also still dealing, like I said, the two, two line of duty officers are the officers that were shot.
Right.
So we're still waiting for some legislative, on the, on the legislation piece.
Which is good for them, but also means that we can then move forward and fill.
Then we can move those positions. I can't fill them, so they're just sitting there.
So just to, you know, again, I know you're having the conversation with the town manager, but just to, you know, just to highlight the fact that this board is very aware that they have a number of, of retirements. There's a whole cohort of officers that are of retirement or close to retirement age. So, you know, there's, there's that component as well. That's just in addition to all the other things that just happened.
Which is why, like I just said to you, we, I mean, we called the list for eight. We had some, we had some viable candidates, but we're only able to pick seven. Once that list is closed, you have to follow civil service rules. Once that list is closed, and closing it means getting signatures, getting it done, getting the paperwork done and getting it back to Boston, we do plan on calling for another list of three. So I'm still going to try to fill that eighth position and the other two at other academies. It won't be the Cape Academy. There are other academies that will keep rolling, so we'll send, which we've sent them, we've sent them as far as West Boylston in the past and we will continue. Wherever there's an open seat, send them.
Madam Chair, if I could just interject, I know that, um, Selectman Brown raised a question about the, um, time it takes to, to move, um, things through the system and essentially the civil service system that we're a part of is a major slowdown. Chief, as he's well aware, we struggle with that year after year and, um, um, it's a continued challenge to get well-qualified candidates coming through that system. And there's, there's always, almost always a significant delay. And that's something that we've had some discussions with, um, uh, the union about as well in terms of the potential to, uh, move away from that system and be able to respond much more quickly with qualified candidates and through a selection process. And I've been in communities that have done that. And, uh, it is something that we hope that, uh, in time we can reconsider to allow us to act much more swiftly.
Can you tell us briefly what might be the, the main, uh, holdup in them not wanting to get rid of that? Is it some sort of protections in their job or?
Well, the, uh, the appearance on a chief's much better able to respond, but I think the, uh, the appearance, uh, for officers in the past is it, it does give them a level of protection. However, um, our view would be that those officers' protection would be retained. It would just be, uh, a system, uh, a transformation in the system for future hiring of future officers that would have, that would be protected through a standalone, uh, system set up through collective bargaining. And, um, civil service in the state is, uh, frequently ill-funded, uh, not sufficiently supported, um, not sufficiently staffed. And it takes a long time to turn around a system with, uh, and get the list to which the chief's referring. And frequently, we have to sit on our heels and wait for a new list to come out because the list gets stale so quickly. And, uh, it's, uh, in a lot of ways, I think it's a system, um, that time has passed by and that, uh, more and more young people are not interested, it seems, in testing through the civil service system process. Uh, but there are individuals that, working with the chief, we can identify in our own community who have an interest in police work and in the case of fire, firefighter work as well. Uh, but, um, the only way they can enter into our system is through civil service. And so it is, you can add several months to the process anytime that that's the case. So it's not strictly about funding positions. It's about the inability, um, in the current climate to encourage qualified young people to want to participate in that system, uh, because, uh, the delays are very significant.
Do we have any neighboring towns that we could look to that are successful in changing their system?
Uh, there, there are some in the Commonwealth, yes. And, uh, we're fully familiar with them.
There are many departments, um, throughout the Commonwealth that are removing themselves from civil service. It is a process.
Right.
And, um, I've spoken with those chiefs, I've, I've, uh, had those conversations. Uh, even the, even the non-civil service departments now, a lot of them, because law enforcement is not a sought-after career like it used to be with everything that's going on in the world today with law enforcement. Uh, a lot of towns that even non-civil service are doing away with the exam. They're just putting out job applications. We got an opening, come in and fill out an application. Just because they're, they're not getting the numbers coming in to take the tests. So, um, so there's, there's a lot of changes going on.
Maybe have to start increasing the pay or some other incentive, right?
Well, there's got to be, there's got to be a screening process.
There's a, there's a screening process.
And I have to say, I really respect the cohort of officers and all of your work that you do. I mean, somehow or other, we've come up with the quality certainly, even if we can't fill all those spots.
I, I will say, I am the chief, but we have some outstanding officers working here in the Falmouth Police Department.
I agree.
Just need a few more.
And I do, I do, I do appreciate the board recognizing that, you know, we do need more and appreciate that support, as do the men and women of the Falmouth Police Department.
Thank you. Any other questions for the chief?
And I also would like to thank you, Mr. Jones, for standing up for our integrity tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
We have a dot proposed comprehensive wastewater management plan. So we started to talk about this. Virginia Valley had to leave and had to call in backup because it got very late. So Mr. Turkington is here. And we had started to talk about whether or not folks believe that this memorandum represented what we had talked about. And Mr. Jones raised the issue of making sure that we, um, if we vote this, that it's clear, um, regarding the postponement of the, um, the C W M P for Oyster Pond, that, that's postponing that submission because that's something different than what people have heard, um, when we spoke about it previously.
Yep.
So, any conversation about this?
I think with that, I'd move to approval.
I guess since, since Eric's here, would you give a thirty minutes num- thumbnail?
No, thirty minutes.
Thirty seconds, thirty seconds.
No, I will not.
Thirty seconds thumbnail sketches to, uh, what the reasoning for postponing the submission for the Oyster Pond C W M P is.
Well, there were two reasons. One is, uh, Ray Jack felt very strongly, and he actually came to one of our meetings and spoke on this, that he, he's got two major reviews going on for other major projects in his domain. And he didn't want three, um, you know. And the other reason frankly was a whole bunch of folks came in from Oyster Pond and agreed with that. They said that this deserves a little more time and, and we should give it some more time. So we agreed with Ray and we agreed with them.
Thank you.
Any other questions for, for Eric or?
No, no questions. I think this is the most, uh, comprehensive and reasonable plan that we could put forward. I know, uh, some folks wish we could have more action sooner, but this is the practical and reasonable approach to be successful at implementing a sewer-ing plan or a wastewater management plan. So I think it's good.
I'll take that as a motion.
I move that we accept this plan.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Madam Chair, just to clarify, this includes the amendments recommended by the Water Quality Management Committee.
Correct.
As, as written in the board's packet.
Yes.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you very much.
And all of your fellow members.
Yes. Thanks, thanks, Amy. Okay. We are going to, in a vote to approve complete street policy. So we previously had a draft. Um, it's been included in this. I know that folks are here from bikeways and we did receive some input. I don't think it got to the rest of the board. Scott Lindell had sent some, um, proposed, I think it went to Doug and I maybe.
I did get that, although I didn't, I didn't see that they were highlighted and honestly, I couldn't really pick out the changes. So do you maybe want to comment on what those were? Is that okay?
When did that arrive? I don't recall seeing it.
Uh, it, it came this afternoon because I think Mr. Lindell didn't get the copy of the draft until.
Friday.
Friday. Right, so it was, came, yeah, so Sunday, Sunday night, I think, right? Or Sunday day?
Do you have it printed, Scott? Okay, we'll try to get an email.
Okay, we're not going to put it outside?
Well, they're here, but. If we figure out what they, what.
Do you want to at least, what, here's what I would suggest. Scott, if you want to, we've had this in front of us, we've looked at it. Scott, if you would like to just sort of talk about what your concerns were so that, and I'll forward it to the rest of the board so that they have it, but.
Great.
Then we can decide what this board is going to do.
Yeah, I think the draft that, uh, um, Ray Jack provided you, uh, meets all the basic minimum limits that the state is looking for. Uh, I'm not sure of that for certain because they, they ultimately review it and, and decide whether it, uh, meets the, the, passes the test or not. But there are, there are three things that I, I felt, first of all, I didn't introduce myself, Scott Lindell, Chair of the Falmouth Bikeways and Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. So I thought there were three things that were missing that I would like to see in them and that the, that the, our committee has discussed in the past, since we circulated a draft, I think, to the planning board and the town planner. And I think I sent one to you, Julian, some years ago, three or four years ago now, when we first put together the, the bicycle plan for town of Falmouth. And those three elements, I think, if I'll take them in, in order of most importance to the committee. One is having an evaluation process, um, when you, when you set up a policy, having an annual review of, of progress made, I think, is a, is a, a rite of passage for these sort of things to be effective. The second thing is to have some sort of citizen advisory board, much like we had for the, uh, the, the transportation, uh, project on Route twenty-eight and Main Street, which was so successful. Some sort of citizen advisory board that would have a quarterly or yearly or semi-annual review, you, you guys decide. And it could be, it could be in conjunction with when the DPW usually sets up its, uh, its annual work of progress and, and just have a sit-down and, and go over that. I thought maybe this is a time when the Transportation Management Commission could take this on at some point in the, in the future, too. Seems like, uh, transportation and complete streets are gaining a lot of, uh, traction, um, now, and, and maybe this is a good way to, to pair them. And finally, um, the third element was, uh, that the Bikeways Committee, um, now the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, has already put in a lot of work into thinking about prioritizing, uh, complete streets for certain arteries and roadways and, and that the bicycle plan ought to be referenced. It's, it's a living document, it'll be updated. Um, we hope to include pedestrian facilities in it as well, um, which we didn't get to do four years ago when we, when you guys approved it.
Quick, um, on the bike plan, just, um, while we're trying to read and listen at the same time.
Oh, sorry, okay.
No, no, it just, so by bike plan, can you just tell folks the process? Is that something that the Board of Selectmen approves or planning approves or where do we find it? Just so anyone who's listening might.
Sure. Quick, uh, thirty-second history because I know it's late, but the, uh, the bicycle plan was developed in two thousand five, two thousand fifteen, um, approved by the Board of Selectmen in two thousand sixteen. We had a lot of help from the Cape Cod Commission, Transportation Specialists, DPW. Peter came to many of our meetings early on to help us develop this. And, um, yeah, so now it's a, it's a, it's a plan in the sense that we prioritized where, where, um, bicycle accommodations ought to be improved in town. And, uh, uh, we, we had a, uh, an implementation strategy as well. And, um, some of those things have come to pass. We've got, uh, uh, these lights at the, at the, uh, Locust Street Crossing now, helping to warn, um, traffic, et cetera. Uh, we're trying to get this crossing going with DPW's help at Goodwill, Goodwill Park. And, um, uh, we've, we're starting to make progress toward the extension northward, too. So those are just some of the priorities we had in that bike plan.
And so, Scott, in this document that you sent, are your recommendations in the bold?
Exactly. Those are, those were, yeah, those are the only things that were not missing in the original draft. I don't, I didn't eliminate anything, I just added these, these other parts.
So unless this board objects, um, I think that these are useful for folks to look at. I don't want to kick the can down the road, but I really don't think anyone's going to be able to read through with, um, I've sent it all to the board, but I think it would be helpful for folks to be able to read through these recommendations, um, and decide whether or not any of those things should be added. What are?
I, I didn't see that.
No, I, it came, I think it came Sunday and I looked at it today and I.
Madam Chair, I didn't get it till Friday afternoon myself. As you know, these were developed along with the planning board, discussed at a joint meeting with the planning board. Were a topic of your deliberations with them. Uh, I, I guess I, I would just ask if, respectfully, if the board would consider, uh, adopting complete streets you've been talking about for a long time. You can make adjustments and changes and amendments to your adoption at any time you care to. That would be my respectful suggestion to, to, to move the process along.
I.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, well, I was just going to say, I don't, I think there's just some fleshing out in what the, what we've done with the, you know, the review of the charter and, and with the boards, um, you know, our strategic plan, we've tended to flesh things out a little bit. So I, I really, I like the idea that this is being presented now, albeit, you know, there are some technical things that come up. I, I like the idea of, um, as you suggested, just the board seeing it now, having us, you know, some time to look at it and, and send it to maybe planning for comment or whatever. But I, I like the fleshing out of these things. And also, you know, it's been a long time coming and it's a pretty momentous, um, occasion for the, the town. And a ton, a ton of people have been advocating and, and working on this. So I don't mind taking another week and, and letting, you know, as, as the chair was saying, this is, you know, this has been something a lot of people are looking for. There's been a decision made and, you know, sometimes the devil's in the details. And to let folks kind of look at that and see what the suggestions are, you know, I, and then when the suggest, we could have a time limit, um, let whatever boards make sense, you know, make a specific request where you, if you have any other comments, have a public comment. And I, I think if it's organized with a deadline, then we're not really kicking the can too far.
I would, actually, I would prefer that we actually vote, what we have in front of us, approve it and we can then change it two or three months if we really feel necessary. I don't think the annual review is as important. And I think that the extra committee look at this will be taken over, as Scott said, by the Transportation Management Committee. I think that we're going to, when we start that committee, they're going to have to be involved in complete streets. And if we decide to add the bike plan to the list of things they're going to look at, that's an easy amend. But I would just really like us to take the step forward and approve it tonight.
I, I disagree. This is going to be our bible for this going forward. This is going to, whatever's decided, you know, we're going to direct when it's put in front of the traffic committee. I, I think having flesh on the bones lets the committee start, you know, the, start the ground running. Um, so I, I feel pretty strongly that, that details should at least be reviewed before we approve.
We have, we've been reviewing it for months.
I think she means what was sent by, by, by ways. I do. Sam?
I, I believe, I don't see anything that's contradictory in this document to the ideas that have been brought forward. I see these as action items that result in what, how we're going to actually implement the complete streets. I don't see these as exclusion. So, I agree with Doug. I think it's almost better to get this document in place and then think about the next steps about actually how we implement it and specific ways that we should and how we should be more effective, including evaluation process and a citizen advisory board. But that's, that's implementation and to me, this is the policy.
Prioritizing roadway improvements, I think, is a pretty important suggestion and the evaluation process of where we are in annual review. I think that's pretty important, too.
You mean, but the ones that were sent by Scott?
Right. I think they're good suggestions.
I'm not suggesting they're not, you know.
Yeah.
And the metrics, I mean, Sam, you're, you're good about evaluation, you know, kind of pro formas and that kind of thing.
I know. He hasn't seen, the problem is that some folks haven't seen, seen it, so it's a little bit hard for
That's right.
Yeah, it's hard for him to comment. So, if
It hasn't really been widely shared, you know. It's just now come out.
Okay.
I agree with you. It's something that we've been talking about for a long time, but this draft is just relatively new.
So, do I have a motion from anybody?
Motion to continue this for
Just at least to our next meeting, right?
Well, I don't know when planning would have a chance to or whoever else. Maybe two meetings, just so that it gets down. Does it make, does that make sense?
Did I misunderstand? But didn't Julian say that planning actually has reviewed this?
But not the new terms.
They haven't, nobody has seen the bike, the suggestions from Bike Ways.
Oh, the new suggestions. I'm sorry. I got you.
Right.
Just discuss it at a joint meeting.
Right.
This draft.
Right.
With the planning board.
Right, right.
And I guess the thing I would respectfully caution the board, planning, planning board's a primary stakeholder in this. So, I would be very cautious if you're going to make changes to what they've already seen to give them enough time.
That's what Sue's saying. That's exactly what I'm saying.
Maybe you need another joint meeting next year before you can move forward with them as a respect for them.
Well, or I think Yeah.
Just, I just pass that along.
I think we can, I think we can send the recommendations of Bike Ways to them to review and planning can certainly let us know. They can review it at their own meeting and let us know if they have concerns or
So, I'll move to continue for thirty days.
But they're not, but they're not coming from us. The recommendations are not coming from us.
No, but we're sharing, we're not saying that they're recommendations that we're making. I think what we would say if we voted on this as a board is that one of our town committees that is sort of really intimately involved in many of the aspects that are discussed in complete streets has weighed in, made some thoughtful recommendations for us to look at.
So, these recommendations came from the Bike Ways Committee?
The, in the email that I just sent, there is bold print of some recommendations, nothing deleted from this, inside of a draft of this.
But from the Bike Ways Committee at their meeting?
Yes.
And I, I think I would make the argument, why didn't this get circulated to Bike Ways and then the changes put together? So, we're just allowing that that process, which should have occurred, now is time to occur fully. So, I would say the motion to continue is thirty days.
And if I could, I think the planning board should be reviewing this regardless.
Well, they reviewed this draft with us.
With us.
Yeah.
Well, I think the argument that this is a working draft is a good argument and I, so I'm not
So, this never went to Bike Ways?
It went to Bike Ways when Scott asked for it, I think.
Friday afternoon.
Friday afternoon.
Yeah. So, I, I think, it should be seen as a, as a working draft and invitation for input. So, I'm open.
Beg your pardon?
When did the committee meet to review this?
The committee did not meet.
So, the committee is not, these are not
Committee had a draft, has had, Doug?
These are recommendations from Scott.
The committee has had a draft.
Yes.
Previous draft of, no, previous drafts of complete streets.
I took, I took the elements that were in the draft that we reviewed three years ago and circulated to the planning board and the Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager's Office and I inserted them.
The ones that you guys have voted on and discussed three years ago.
Yep. Correct.
When you first started talking about complete streets.
Yep.
Yeah.
And so, thirty days should
Yes, that's your motion.
That's my motion.
Well, we don't have to, let's just say, yeah, okay, thirty days.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Yeah.
But not an exact date, but, okay. So, I have a motion and a second to continue this.
Let me say, I thought this was an excellent document as a starting point.
Sure, I agree.
I think it's, it's well-written and I think if we can augment it in ways that are useful for planning, you know, town planning, fine. Let's, let's get some additional input and if we can unify people's thinking, we have a common vision, well, it's probably a good idea to bring more parties into looking at it.
So, Madam Chairs, are we requesting that the planning board act on this within approximately thirty days?
Yes, I think what we'll do is just provide comments. I mean, we're going to give them the copy and explain where it's coming from and have some to weigh in with any comments.
Can I ask for clarification, Madam Chair? Are you asking that the Bike Ways Committee first act upon this at one of their meetings?
No, because these, I mean
These are comments that, we're soliciting comments and inputs. He's just pointing out that
But not from the committee.
Well
If the committee wants to, if the committee wants to reiterate, if they want to reiterate what they already voted on three years ago, that Scott has put in this, then they can, I'm going to leave that up to you to address it with your committee. But I, I know because I've been to your meetings that this has been something we've talked about for years and you've talked about those sort of specific concerns that that, that the committee has voted on and has circulated previously, correct me if I'm wrong, as concerns. Is that correct?
But if those concerns have been circulated previously
In years past.
In years past, we've already had this process go through and they weren't put in.
They weren't asked, Doug. That's the whole point. Part of what we should have done is give it to the committee in time, what do you, do you have any suggestions? They worked as quickly as they could to give us some and now we have thirty more days. He, you know, the committee can certify it, planning can read in.
We're saying three years ago, this stuff was suggested. So, we've already had the suggestion. Well, it was in the draft from three years ago. And it was not put in. Right.
Yeah, well, who filtered it out? I mean, I, I think it's worth, I think it's worth looking at it in a little more comprehensive way and getting input from the various committees.
To Julian's point, we should send this draft to the Bike Ways Committee to have them meet and respond to it.
Yes.
We can, we don't have to tell them to meet. I think that during the thirty days, that planning's looking at this.
We'll take that initiative, Doug. We'll take that initiative.
Yes, fine.
Right.
You have been so warned or directed.
I think that they were concerned that they weren't sent the draft.
Yes.
And so, I think it's appropriate for us to send them the draft and have them respond to it.
And that's thirty days, yeah.
We meet the first Wednesday in December, so that'll be two weeks from now.
So, that'll be upcoming.
I mean, it was originally their initiative to request that we consider complete streets.
Right. We ask committees to do a lot of work and then I think if we then, you know, we're not even taking it into account. It's, you know, I think it's, it's really a bit disheartening for committees that put lots of work into things and that really drill down and focus on particular issues, so.
You took the words right out of my mouth.
Well, I, I don't mind comments, but I mean, honestly, this draft does include consideration of bikes and vehicles and pedestrians. So, I don't see an exclusionary process. I mean, it's fine to get input of additional ideas and maybe some wordage to go into it, but this is a good starting point.
It is. Great. Well said. I think it is. And nothing's to say that those things are going to be adopted. But again, I think one of the critiques that we get is that process isn't inclusive enough or that committee's work, we heard this tonight, you know, in silos. And so, the goal here is to sort of get beyond that and this is a committee that wants to be part of the process and share some of their thoughts. No board is, this board is im bound by any of that, but it's a process.
But we encourage it. Do we take a vote on the
We haven't voted yet.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed?
Aye, I'm prepared to vote tonight.
All right, thank you. Did, did, was your comment, okay.
I just, the, 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 been going on for three years in Bike Ways today, a couple more weeks, we're doing that.
Thank you. Okay, we have approved creation and mission statement of Citizens Advisory Committee for future fire station location. So, thank you to, where's my, I was doodling on my language. Thank you to Julian and Peter for putting together some draft sort of language around what we need to do. Mr. Suso, did you want to sort of kick off?
Yeah, sir, happy to, Madam Chair. Just, these are just some bullet points. I think the board at your most recent meeting talked about potentially the, conceptually, a nine-member committee. It's back on the agenda so that if the board is prepared to move forward, that we could advertise yet this month, really, the ad should go in, in Friday's newspaper so that we could have the normal thirty days to give people a chance to apply during the month of December. And as the board's aware, we've got two holidays coming up, so it makes it a little bit challenging. But then you could interview and appoint in the month of January and they could get started pretty quickly. And we certainly would have a product to share with them and go through the process that the board would ordain.
So, you need a mission from us, right? A mission statement from us?
Yeah, and this is just a very rough one, a draft one here that the board could elaborate on or further adjust in whatever manner you care to.
I have a suggestion, Madam Chair, if you would, just to make, I think, make it a little
For the mission statement?
Right. So, I, I think that the elements are here, but I would change the beginning of it and instead state, to meet, collect and review information to facilitate a recommendation to Selectmen on one slash more sites for potential new fire station. And the only caveat with that is I don't know whether we need to be explicit about it or not, but I think that, that when you review sites for new fire station, by definition, that is going to include a review of staffing. So, the community, whoever's on the committee, these nine members, would have an understanding of, because it's, it's kind of complicated. Having worked on this with our town manager for, I don't know, six years probably, and gone to many, many meetings, it's a, it's a specialty kind of staffing where there's rotation so that the entire town can be well-covered. And so, I think that, I don't, my only question is whether we would be explicit about that. I think it's, you know, it's self-evident, but that would be my
I think it is a component of it because we've had this conversation about whether we're talking five, four, you know, what the ultimate, so I think that
Including staffing, maybe we should say, or however that's, certainly that's the purview of the chief and all of that, but I just, however, that would be included.
The members of the committee will need to understand staffing as it relates to the station and location decisions.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Is it a, a new fire station or is it a potential new fire station?
It says one slash more.
Sites for a potential new fire station.
Oh, uh-huh.
Is that limiting that it is only possible
The A, I gotcha. One or more sites for potential new fire station. We could do one of those per n with an S. I see. Okay.
Just to leave it open enough for
Per n with an S at the end.
One at a time, please.
Yeah, I know, right? Doug thinks big. Other Doug.
Perfect. So, with that mission statement, that do you, can you just read it back? What
To meet, collect and review information to facilitate a recommendation on one or more sites for new fire station, stations.
And I just had kept the to Selectmen. I know that's obvious, but
Recommendation to Selectmen.
Recommendation to Selectmen.
Yeah.
Right? Any other thoughts about the mission statement? Keep it simple and concise.
I guess I wouldn't reiterate the twos. Just on grammatical point and infinitives, I'd rather have to meet, to review and to collect.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Agreed. That's the right way to do it.
Yeah.
Any other?
I don't know if you consider it part of the mission statement or the composition of the committee. You want to leave the composition of the committee separate because we did have another suggestion on the composition of the committee.
I, I'd like to just make sure we're looking at the entire town for people, folks to apply and for the board to consider because when, there's been a lot of, you know, folks have approached, you know, it says northwest, does that mean it's predetermined? And the answer is no, it was, it was really meant to inform but not to exclude. So, I, that would be my only thought on that question.
Do you want to, I'm happy to hear your
So, the, so the question is, do you want to send it, and I think we, we took this approach with the Shelterfish Advisory Committee where we had a number of stakeholder groups that we wanted to have represented, but we didn't want to be overly prescriptive, not knowing who might come forward. So, to state a goal that, to try to get representation from as many of the eight villages as possible.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I think that's a good stated goal and then we see who applies and
But I would separate from the mission statement. I would have, I would go ahead with the mission statement, vote that and then have another vote about the number of people and goal of representation.
Yep.
I think that's one of the reasons you talked about nine, was to try and be, have a geographic balance.
Yeah, I'm not sure which village he wants to exclude with eight.
You are so fresh.
Are there nine? Because we were talking about, we only came up with eight. Oh, I was thinking precincts, though. Yeah, no, not precincts, villages. So, we're looking at, we've got, we've got Wacoit, Hatchville, Teeticket, Woods Hole, East Thalmouth, North Thalmouth, West Thalmouth, Thalmouth. All right. We got, but that was, you know, we could be mistaken. We could have left one out. So, if you
But this is not, this is not to suggest that we're limited to one from every, no, because who knows who applies.
Right, it's just a target, from as many as possible.
Exactly. Great. So, let's vote these things separately. That's right.
We're going to vote these things separately. The mission statement, as Peter just read it back to us, I have a motion to approve. Hey, do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mission statement. And then of the general composition, it would be nine individuals from, with, you know, a emphasis on trying to find representation from all eight villages.
I wouldn't put the number.
Of what? The people?
Villages.
Of villages?
You know, there will be some say, of course, it's a village, or the others who say
So, nine individuals from
As many villages as possible.
Or how about just from across
Why, why range of geographic?
Broad geographic area as possible.
Broad geographic representation.
Yep, good.
So, is
Nine with, from a broad geographic representation.
So, that's Doug's motion. I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Great. Anything else you need from us on that?
If it's agreeable, we will advertise that on Friday.
Excellent.
Great, thank you.
And can we just, let me just ask, traffic management has been advertised.
It has.
And we got some applications?
Yes.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure.
Can update you on the status of that yet this week.
Great, thank you. Okay. Steamship Authority.
Have you finished whatever you're, whatever you're making?
Yeah, she's got ten of her sweaters done for Christmas. Discussion, discuss the Steamship Authority's Long-Term Vineyard Transportation Task Force and the Working Group to Identify and Develop Ways to Mitigate Traffic. Mr. Suso, do you want to stop that off?
Well, yes, we, we received a communication from the executive director indicating that they're creating both a task force and a working group and asking each community if they'd want to designate two individuals for each one of those slightly different missions. And I think you have a copy of the letter so indicating. Perhaps you want to think about that and take that up at a meeting to come.
But you don't have to go home. Any, what's the board's pleasure or any thoughts on this?
I think it needs to be more explained. I'm sure our representative might have some
Did you want to come and just give us a little insight?
You have any insights?
I don't want to put you on the spot to speak for the Steamship.
Just, so I, I'll tell you how, I've been to some of the meetings and I have a rudimentary understanding. So, you, it could be a launchpad to either correct me or flesh out what I'm, you know, what comes to the top of my head. So
You're going to have to take the podium, podium if you want to be speaking and let, let the audience know who you are.
Probably, probably. I'm just filling space here. But so, they, you know, the, there's been a long discussion about having more communication between the Steamship and concerned citizens. And one of the things that came out of the vineyard side was, you know, a citizens committee. And there, you know, there've been kind of some inputs, some suggestions, out-of-the-box ways of thinking, you know, some ideas that you might have heard before and, you know, others that might be new. And I, I think, you know, it's a credit to the Steamship to really take the advice that I know this board has suggested where there be more conversation on actions. The question I would have in that regard, since the vineyard is mentioned in particular, what does that mean for Thalmouth? Is the, is the long-range vineyard transportation task force restricted to vineyard members? And then would we appoint the Working Group to Identify and Develop Ways to Mitigate Traffic, being the Thalmouth group? Is that, or is there a different mission for these groups?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Kate Wilson, Steamship Authority representative from Thalmouth. And my understanding is that, well, this started for me a few months ago when I realized that these issues about transportation and communication were so difficult. So, I had asked management at the time if we could have a vote along these lines where we would ask the towns to get involved on a regular basis until we had some kind of dialogue. until we had some kind of dialogue that was sort of working and effective. So that came up at the last board meeting, and we voted to do this. My understanding of how these, um, these committees or, you know, this, this process would work is that it would develop a line of communication between Falmouth and the vineyard primarily. And then to the extent that New Bedford wants to get involved, that they would then also get involved. As I said, I'm, I, I, it hasn't been fleshed out as to how this would work. And I don't, I don't see it as, um, specific to advancing the, any one port's interests. In other words, Martha's Vineyard's interests as opposed to Falmouth. It's really the, uh, what works best jointly for the communities.
That, that's great. So is the expectation that we would advertise for folks that might be interested over a period of a couple of weeks and then get back to you? Or, in other words, what you, you'd be asking for from us would be, um, a process to appoint two members? Is that correct?
I haven't had any detailed conversations about it. And again, my understanding is that it, this would not be a process that Steamship would be in charge of. Really, my personal goal is that the towns and the regional entities get involved so that by default, Steamship isn't the one deciding what's best traffic-wise.
So are you asking this board to make a mission statement and decide a number of people to go on this board? To the extent, you know, that, I think they just want two.
I think they're to, looking for two groups to form.
Yeah, if I look at, so, just two.
Yeah, so for the task force, they're looking for two individuals, but one specifically, maybe a staff member with transportation or planning. The other one would be someone sort of that we pick from the community. And then there's no, um, sort of criteria for the two individuals to be on the working group, so.
And the task force is really looking at transportation issues for both people and freight. And the working group is dealing with mitigating some of the issues that just happened because you have traffic going through these communities and how can you-
And with the terminal redevelopment project going on, these issues are particularly relevant.
I like the idea, I'm just trying to figure out the implementation. So would we, we would advertise, I guess, except for the staff?
But do we have to advertise if we want to appoint?
I don't think we have to advertise, I think-
Can we just appoint two individuals as we see fit for both of these things?
But like, what if, say, you know, Catherine Bumpus, we appointed you to the committee on whatever, she might be surprised or she might-
Oh, I don't think we could, yeah, I don't think we can, not tonight.
I don't, not tonight.
I think we could, one of our members here might volunteer, that's the only way we could do it right away.
Yeah, I think this is, this is-
That's why I'm asking about how do we get people.
Yeah, I think the mechanics are, we're not doing it tonight.
Yeah.
The request has been made.
Yeah.
We, I don't think we have to advertise, but I think we have to decide as a board and reach out. Do you think we have to advertise?
Well, I guess, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent clear. Is it a committee of the Steamship Authority? It sounds like it's not. It sounds like it's a committee of the Board of Selectmen. So if it's a, if it's a creature of the Board of Selectmen-
That's what I'm hearing.
No, I think it's the Steamship Authority voted to establish this.
And is that correct? The Steamship voted, Steamship Authority voted to establish these two committees?
It asked for representatives.
Right, that is true.
So it's, so our representatives to their two boards.
It's not your committee.
This is part of their accepting the challenge to do some long-range planning, and they're trying to facilitate it. I would be personally interested to be involved in the first one with the Long Range Transportation Task Force if-
Can we be appointed?
Go that way?
Can we be appointed? And we're not pointing to a committee, so maybe this is one thing that we, where we would be allowed to have a selectmen.
It sounds like it would.
If we can, I think it would be a great idea to have Doug Brown and a staff member for the task force.
I think, and Doug certainly has been very involved and done a lot of research.
He's gone over there.
Pretty familiar with the issues and-
Hit the ground running.
Forgot the lay of the land and-
Been to New Bedford, been, so what I would say is, let's just get some way in to make sure that Doug can be. Let's just check with town council to make sure it doesn't violate. And then we can, um-
And also we'll check with SSA and see if that's what they're considering.
We don't have to, we'll just, I think they're leaving that up to us, I think, so. Um, but then I think we, we should probably just decide as a group, do, is, is this for the working group individuals?
That's surprise to people.
Is it something we want to advertise for? Does this board feel it's appropriate to advertise for that, or, um?
On that one, it's probably best to find someone who's most dealing with the noise issues in Woods Hole and more familiar with that, so.
You know, I think a lot of times, for example, the way David appoints people is just, he makes outreach to people he knows who are in, you know, have interest. And so maybe, it sounds like that would be possible as well.
Once there's articles in the paper, this committee's going to be there, and we want to appoint two people, I'm sure we're going to have to give it up.
You're going to be fending them off?
I'm actually going to be-
So why don't we, we'll-
Yeah, but how, how are we going to get beyond the lobbying and actually bring in some expertise that might give us some solutions? A spot, you know, bothering me, you don't want just people going and complaining. You want people to come up with some positive constructive solutions that could be implemented. And, and so I'm, I'm worried about, you know, okay, who do we put on this? If it's just complainers, we're not going to get anywhere because it's going to be a silo. And the Steamship Authority is not going to be able to deal with it.
So do, do you feel that that's then something that we should advertise for, so we broaden the field?
Yeah.
The only thing I'd, I would put into that argument, because I certainly see the point, is that it seems the Steamship has thought of that already a little bit when they, when they have their two bullet points. One where they say, um, they suggest a, a staff member with transportation or planning experience and responsibilities. So it seems as if they're, they're looking for a balance. And then it seems like the second category is kind of at large. So it does seem like they've accounted for the, an expertise level.
Those are two different groups, though.
Oh, prob-, oh, I, so probably you think they meant, might probably even mean, well, maybe one is for general feedback and the other is for more expertise, yeah.
I think the task force can be much more for expertise on shipping and freight and transportation issues. I think the next, the second one may very well be where they want to hear the people who are going to complain. And then they can try to figure out a, a solution for it.
Designate a complainer.
But I take Sam's, I take Sam's point good also.
Some ideas, somebody who could be, yeah, constructive, complain.
So, so what I would, what I would move is that we, um, get input from Frank about the first category, uh, because it's going to be someone from staff that we would certainly choose, and then perhaps Doug from this board, because I think that, that that makes sense as long as Doug can be, fill that position. And then I would say, let's, um, plan to advertise for the, those other two spots because I think we want to make sure we, you know, we know sort of the faces that we always see on this issue, but, um, we may want to look beyond that scope for other folks who might be interested.
And you're suggesting advertise and interview, appoint?
I am, because I think it's, it's only fair.
And for that matter, someone might come forward that is more prone to, uh, serve in this role than myself, and I would defer to that, but if not, then I'll fill it in.
No, you're stuck, you're stuck, you're a good resource and-
No backses.
Yep, exactly.
Kate, when is, when is this supposed to get, when are we supposed to, you know, fill this by? When are you going to launch and get going?
Well, our next, our next board meeting is tomorrow morning. So, and then we meet once a month. And, um, so I would say, um, December, let's see, so this is November, so December, so probably by January?
Great, that gives us time.
Are you meeting in Falmouth tomorrow?
Yes.
So, Madam Chair, do you want to give them thirty days to respond to an advertisement? Similar to the other, uh, the committee we're going to advertise?
I, I'm sorry, I missed the first part. Are you asking if that's what we want to do?
Thirty days.
Yes, do you want to give respondents thirty days like you would on a normal committee?
I would do two weeks.
I agree.
Because I really, as, as Kate said, if they're going to be in January, I would rather have the interviews in December, a December meeting. So they can be at that January meeting.
Absolutely.
Give them two weeks.
So that's my motion with that timeline. Do you have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Thank you very much for sticking it out and for this great idea, thank you. Okay, we have, um, our annual license renewals. I'm going to read them through for a category, if you want to hold it.
Madam Chair, can I clarify one item? There was a Scrivener error. Falmouth Jade Inc. and Golden Sales, uh, are the same, and they go by the name Falmouth Jade Inc., so Golden Sales can go away.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to hand these to you. Is that true for everything, right?
Because in common victoria, they're not-
Yes, where they're both named, it should just be Falmouth Jade Inc.
So if common victoria, they only listed as Golden Sales, so it should be Falmouth Jade for a golden common victoria?
That's my understanding. I didn't realize that was, um-
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I need to step out for a moment. We don't have, uh, nothing, what you need me for right now.
Good, okay. I'm going to go through them, if you have a concern, you want to hold it, otherwise I'll do it as a category, if that's okay. All alcohol restaurant, Blue Finns, 295 Main Street, Falmouth Country Club, 630 Carrot Shop Road, Falmouth Jade Inc., 143 145 East Falmouth Highway, Flying Bridge Restaurant, 220 Scranton Avenue, Grumpy's Pub, 29 Locust Street, Ostaria La Chivetta, 133 Main Street, Pickle Jar Kitchen, 170 Main Street, Sopranos by the Sea, 286 Grand Avenue, TGC 132 Falmouth Woods Road. Do you have a-
Move approval.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All alcohol club, Falmouth Yacht Club, 290 Clinton Avenue.
Move approval.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All alcohol package store, Falmouth Wine and Spirits, 322 Palmer Avenue, Family Foods, 350 East Falmouth Highway, RJ Varieties and Liquors, 174 Sandwich Road, West Falmouth Market, 623 West Falmouth Highway.
Move approval.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Wine and malt restaurant, Crab Apples, 533 Palmer Avenue, New Golden Dynasty, 25 Davis Straits, Papageno's, 56 Davis Straits, Sam's Seafood, 356 Palmer Avenue, Steve's Pizzeria, 374 Main Street.
Move approval.
Second?
Aye, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Wine and malt package store, Holly Park Variety, 580 A Route 28A, Intergas Service Center Incorporated, 607 Main Street, Jack and the Beanstalk, 800 Gifford Street Extension, Ocean State Job Lot, 50B T-Ticket Highway, Windfall Market, 77 Scranton Avenue.
Move approval.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wine, malt, and cordial in holder, Palmer House Inn, 8, uh, 81 Palmer Avenue.
Move approval.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Farmer Brewery, Bad Martha's Brewery, 876 East Falmouth Highway.
Move approval.
Second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, common victoria license. Um, let's see, we'll do, we'll start with, um, sorry, where is it here? Falmouth Jade Incorporated, 143 145 East Falmouth Highway, Bad Martha's Brewery, 876 East Falmouth Highway, Blue Finns, 295 Main Street, Kate Cod Bagel Company, 419 Palmer Avenue, Crab Apples, 533 Palmer Avenue, DeAngelo, 689 Main Street, Falmouth Country Club, 630 Carrot Shop Road, Falmouth Yacht Club, 29 Clinton Avenue, excuse me, 290 Clinton Avenue, Falmouth Percy's Place, 40 Main Street, Flying Br- Bridge Restaurant, 220 Scranton Avenue, Grumpy's Pub, 29 Locust Street, Mary Ellen's Portuguese Bakery, 829 Main Street, McDonald's, 6, 263 T-Ticket Highway, Munich's Cafe, 460 Walk White Highway, New Golden Dynasty, 25 Davis Straits. I'm going to have you just do all those, I can't talk and write at the same time. Ostaria La Chivetta, 133 Main Street, Papageno's, 56 Davis Straits, Pickle Jar Kitchen, 170 Main Street, Seafood Sam's, 356 Palmer Avenue, Sopranos by the Sea, 286 Grand Avenue, Steve's Pizzeria, 374 Main Street, TGC 132 Falmouth Woods.
Move approval.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Want me to read so you can sign?
Sure.
In holder, Admiralty Inn, 51 T-Ticket Highway, Palmer House Inn, 81 Palmer Avenue.
Move approval.
Second?
You still think so?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Entertainment, Bad Martha's Brewery, 876 East Falmouth Highway, Falmouth Yacht Club, 290 Clinton Avenue, Flying Bridge Restaurant, 220 Scranton Avenue, Grumpy's Pub, 29 Locust Street, and Sopranos by the Sea, 286 Grand Avenue.
Move approval.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Sunday Entertainment, Bad Martha's Brewery, 876 East Falmouth Highway, Falmouth Yacht Club, 290 Clinton Avenue, Flying Bridge Restaurant, 220 Scranton Avenue, Grumpy's Pub, 29 Locust Street, Sopranos by the Sea, 286 Grand Avenue.
Move approval.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Automatic Amusements.
Okay. Um, automatic amusements, DeAngelo's, 689 Main Street, Grumpy's Pub, 29 Locust Street, Papageno's, 56 Davis Straits.
Move approval.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Class two used cars, Braga Auto Sales, 227R Main Street, Sandy's Auto Sales, 45 Simpson Lane, Savon Haydom LLC, 561 Thomas Landers Road.
Move approval.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Vehicles for hire, Weber Livery Service, 350 Old Meeting House Road.
Move approval.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's it, okay.
I'm getting punchy at this point.
Any meeting minutes?
Madam Chair, there, um, there is a set of executive session minutes that, um, we have some content corrections to address, so we would ask that you defer those.
Great.
And September twenty-third was inadvertently, uh, not, not included.
Okay.
Those will be, uh, next time.
Okay, so we don't have any minutes that we have to look at tonight?
No, you do.
October twenty-one, November four, and November twelve, and November thirteen.
Does anybody have them in their packets?
I don't have them, so I can just review.
Our oversight, we'll get those to you.
Okay.
There was a, yeah, I think it went out in a separate email. It was an attachment to a separate email message.
It was not in the paper packets.
Okay, good.
So maybe we can, we'll double-check that.
Yeah, reset.
Same for executive session. Okay, individual selectmen reports. One minute. One minute at most.
I will be attending the Steamship Board meeting tomorrow morning, and I'm also meeting on Thursday with, um, the SMART group down at Woods Hole at the library. And I have, um, transportation, um, experts from Cape Cod Commission meeting with them, so hope to learn a little something then.
Well, the only thing I could mention that you haven't been to is that I did participate in the Career Day for the high school and Rotary supports it and a number of other staff members from the high school. And our students get to go out into various businesses and industries and organizations within Falmouth to kind of get an exposure. They're juniors, they're thinking about their career plans, and it's a great opportunity for them to interact with some of the people that are here in the town that can give them some sense of where they might want to go.
Excellent. Sue? Pass. Okay, pass.
Uh, just a reminder to everybody, the Falmouth Service Center is receiving donations of turkeys and other Thanksgiving items from twelve to four on Sunday. You can drive right by, they'll take it out of your car, and you can get along the road.
Yeah, we mentioned that earlier.
Great reminder. Mr. Suso, can I address a part?
Yeah, a couple, uh, brief ones. Want to thank the board for your, uh, recent active participation in November Town Meeting. We did get a very good direction on multiple items and a very thorough discussion over those three nights. Also, I wanted to, uh, just confirm that we are moving forward with a transition to a digital, a town hall digital security and locking system. And, uh, that will be, uh, moving through the transition process, uh, beginning today and extending through the month. And it'll routinely make the building op- open and available to the public during all times of public meetings and, uh, but again, we're going through a fine-tuning process with that, so we'll keep the board apprised. And as a reminder, Selectmen's next regular business meeting is a week from tonight, Monday, November twenty-fifth, the Monday before Thanksgiving. And you have two remaining scheduled meetings for the month of November, December ninth and December sixteenth. That concludes my report, thank you.
I attended a housing summit on Friday. There were two members of the ZBA, um, a couple staff from ZBA as well, which was terrific. That was one part of the target audience of the Housing Assistance Corporation. It was a really good summit.
Excellent. Great, thank you. Second?
Aye.
Kyle, all those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, two of you may have some steps, one of you-